Time I'm gonna. I'm gonna call the Brookline BCA meeting to order at six oh two. The first order business will be to review changes to the agenda if needed. Does anyone see any changes that we have to do in just this short agenda? And the next thing would be scheduled members of the public and. With us is Leslie Goldman, representative. And I spoke with her already, but if she would like to address the audience, that would be great. And give us an idea of what's going on. With the redistricting.
So I am represent, I am Leslie Goldman, I am your representative. Currently, many of you haven't met, so it's good to see you even from afar. The. Meeting of the BCA, of course, is in response to the Legislative Apportionment Board, which is known as the LAB. And of course, every ten years by the Constitution, we have to do our reapportionment. It's pretty straightforward, the Constitution says the census of that decade gets divided by one hundred and fifty. And then each district has to be represent that number of people. It's about forty-three hundred with the twenty twenty census. So the Legislative Apportionment Board, the LAB, has to come up with districts for the House and for the Senate. Currently, the House has been presented, the Senate not yet. The current. Maps, which is can be found on the Secretary of State website. Under Apportionment Board was voted in with a vote of four to three, which I understand is close for the LAB vote. Compared to past times. The vote that was approved or the maps, excuse me, that were approved was a one district, one representative map. The process then is that it goes to the BCA of each town. The BCA gets a chance to respond to the map. And then that response is sent back to the LAB, the Apportionment Board. They may revise their maps based on the information they get from the BCA's. And then it goes to. In this case, since it's the House, the House Government Operations Committee. And once they make their recommendations, it goes to the full House. There are five criteria, which I believe you have from the Secretary of State, because a letter was sent to every BCA. Which allows the BCA to respond to the maps using those criteria. The BCA is there, the Secretary of State and the LAB is asking for response by November fifteenth. So that's the process that I believe this meeting is here for, that you're meeting in, you know, tonight for. I am part of the Rockingham BCA, so I know about our process. And I'm very willing to answer any questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate that, and I don't know how much input you are allowed to being in the position you are. To, you know, to. Address us, but I guess the gist of this meeting is to see if there's any pushback to the map that we've seen. Where we are joining forces with Westminster. And as I've discussed this with a few other people, Westminster doesn't seem to be a great fit for us. We're a town of five hundred and fifty people, Westminster, that means must have three thousand people, so. I don't know how we would be equally representative with one representative. Although, the survey did show that the vast majority of Vermonters do want to have one representative for one district. So.
Yeah, Guy, if I could make a couple of comments, I'm not sure that that survey, you know, it. I've seen some questions raised about the validity of the survey results. And who was included in that survey, I don't think one would, it was necessarily a random sample. And doesn't necessarily have statistical weight, so that's an interesting question that I think is still out there. So that, that's one piece. I think, I want to be sure that you understand that the second map, the one that the three members of the Apportionment Board. Voted for is also available on the website. And that does not include a one-member, one-district proposal. It does recommend several. Two-member districts, several more than was in the one-person, one-member, and I think, and that's, the woman's name is Jean Albert. And that map is on the Secretary of State website. And I believe in that proposal, Brookline is in a map. Or is the district with Westminster and Rockingham. So that those three towns would then be considered one district, and it would keep Rockingham whole. The one-member, one-district map for Rockingham was not, not approved of at all by the BCA, because it carves out Saxon's River. And, you know, Saxon's River is fully integrated into the town of Rockingham, so. The. Preference for our area is to have, to have a district that includes Rockingham, Westminster and Brookline. Which is, I believe, what the BCA sent up to the Secretary of State.
Okay, well, the survey that I'm quoting was forwarded to me, or was on the Secretary of State's website. So that was the only thing that I had to go by.
Oh, totally, I, yeah, I saw that same information.
I'm not challenging their integrity, but.
No, no, neither, but I'm just saying, I've heard it said, I'm not sure of the statistical validity of that survey, it's a question.
But it is a good idea to be representative, one representative for a district, and to me, that makes a lot of sense. That seems to be a more democratic thing, so I will ask my fellow board members if they have any questions or any. Pushback in regards to the map, I did not see the map where Brookline was joined with Westminster and Rockingham, I did not see that map, but maybe I missed.
Is this, is this, is this Rockingham here?
It's in Northern Park, yes.
You know, this, yeah, that's.
That's Rockingham?
Yes, that's just a portion of Rockingham, yeah. I saw that, but that was just a portion, and it didn't really leave Rockingham whole, because it was just the south. Corner of it, I'm sorry, I didn't see that map. So again, what I'm saying is that for, for Brookline, with five hundred and thirty people, five hundred and forty people. We're not, you know, it's, it's not a real good fit for us, but it's the best we can do because Vermont has. Four or five big city hubs in a restful of small towns. So that's what, so I'll just let my fellow board members address any concerns or anything that they would like to. See us put on this response form for the Secretary of State's office.
Just people want to see.
Another comment? If I may. I think that in a way you have sort of three options, one is you could accept the one-person, one map. You know, that, the four. Group, or you could look at the other map and say that you prefer to be in the Jean Walter map. Or you could say you prefer no change at all, that you're very happy with your Wyndham three configuration, and you rather, you know, continue as is. Those are the three choices that I see, there may be more, but I don't, I don't know what they are, I'd be curious to know if you thought there were others.
So, just so you know, Leslie, I just pulled up the, the alternate map. That the minority members on the committee. Put forward, so we're all, I, I don't know that any of us had seen that before now, but I think we're quickly looking at that, so. I, I assume I'm correct in saying that, so in this map. Rockingham, Westminster and Brookline, in their entirety, would be part of a two-member district.
That's right.
Right, okay. So that's the depiction.
So that's an alternative?
That's the, that's one, that's the alternative on the table, yeah.
Okay. And basically, the input that we add to the state, they will take that in consideration and. They pretty much will make up their own mind anyway. So anyway, so if anyone else would like to ask Leslie a question, or have any things that we should incorporate on that form that I'm going to submit. By the fifteenth, it's basically going to be any objections or any comments that you would like in regards to the proposed redistricting.
I mean, I think, I guess I'll just say along the lines of what you talked about, I mean. It seems odd, but maybe this is the only way to do it, and maybe there are other, to be honest, I haven't gone through and tried to. Examine the map intricately to know whether there are other towns in the same situation, but, I mean. We technically share a border with Westminster, but it's not like you could get to Westminster directly from Brookline. I mean, we really, we share a wooded boundary. We have no. Real interaction with Westminster, generally speaking. But, and I don't know if there are a lot of other towns that are in similar situations in this. Proposal, but that just seems. Less than ideal if there was a way to avoid it, but maybe there's a way to avoid it.
Bruce, do you have any? Joseph, can you hear this conversation?
Yeah, I can, and I suppose I'm just gonna echo the sentiments of David and you, Guy. But I will say that. You know, under, under, under any system, we're a small town, so it's, it's. You know, it's not like we're gonna have a huge amount of, of say, one way or another, but it does seem odd that. That we're being lumped in with, with communities that we really have no interaction with it, I mean, it's even less than. To say that we, there's not really a road that goes there, it's. The, the people of Brookline, I, I don't think really have a, a strong. You know, community interaction with Rockingham or Westminster. You know, it's, I know it's not on the, the choice, it's not one of the choices, but. Being lumped in with a town like Townsend or Newfane, I think that would be something that everyone could get behind, because that's where our. Community interacts, but I personally. Unless I'm missing something, I don't see an improvement with, with either of these proposals. When you compare it to the system that we currently have.
That's a good point.
All right, so, thanks, Joseph, so I, I think at this point, Leslie. It seems to be consensus that the Board of Civil Authority for Brookline is not really on board with the proposal. And we can just submit a comment saying that it doesn't seem to fit Stan.
I sat down and analyzed the census information. For the towns that are in the northern two-thirds of Wyndham County. Looked at the population changes, looked at the ratios relative to the ideal. Numbers that they're looking for. And I, I went and itemized the six reasons in writing. Why we shouldn't be. Positioned with Westminster. And I came up with eleven reasons, very good valid reasons. Why we should be coupled with Newfane, Townsend. Athens, and perhaps Grafton. When you take the population of those three towns and look at the resulting number of population. And then factor in the ideal number. The limit of variation is one-half of one percent, which is about. The best ratio that could possibly be come up with. When you look at the other Wyndham County towns that are being proposed and coupled off the graph or chart. It is on the website for the state, so I'm, I'm prepared to, and when you look at also the fact that I was advised. Within the last week and a half, that that particular, the LAB. Has already divided basically in half some of the towns, about fifty towns in the state of Vermont already. When you look at the numbers of the surrounding towns from those four towns that I, I personally like to see, just one of a ward or committee. There are other ways that those other towns can be split up to make numbers come out any way you want. I know back ten years ago, when Carolyn Partridge was here at a town meeting, at our town meeting back when. There was a lot of, there were negative comments about being coupled and brought into what we currently have, because it was felt to be. That, that Putney Mountain Extension northward. And, and the fact that, you know, we have a hospital here, we have a volunteer fire department here. Many of the families in those four towns are interrelated and married. We have Oktoberfest on the common of Newfane, we have the, our school system is such that Brookline participates in the elementary level of Newfane. And on a high school level with Leon and Gray and Townsend. Yeah, our postal service is segmented, so, and those are all included in the, one of the eleven reasons why we shouldn't be going where we. Where we are currently and why we shouldn't be looking at this new proposal. So I don't know how the board, BCA board wants to handle this, but, I mean, that, that's my suggestion, if we're gonna offer a change. And I know you want to say something, and I do want to thank you for being here tonight or listening, that's critical, we shouldn't forget that.
Yeah, no, of course, I just want to say, Stan, I think you raise a really important point, that there is a fourth option. And you make a good case for that, which is that your, your community, and I think one of the criteria is the cultural interaction of the area. Is, you know, Townsend and Newfane, and that there's a good argument to be made for that. So I think you should make, I mean, I think it's very reasonable to make that argument.
Well, that's one of the three criteria in the, at the end with the final decision, based upon whether we're contiguous, whether we share cultural things and so forth. Which will help us decide what's best for the town of Brookline. And I think Stan has done a great job, and I would like him to possibly read off his, his answers, and I would. I'm gonna ask him to maybe respond to the, the feedback form and incorporate those into. And that would satisfy the needs for the town of Brookline, and also, you know, give the Secretary of State an idea of how we feel.
Yeah, I will say that when you look at the way they've set up the district of Townsend, Newfane and Marlboro. Marlboro is kind of like us relative to Westminster, Marlboro. Borders Halifax, there's a lot of common boundary there, there, there's no natural barrier. Socially, you've got Whitingham, Halifax and Marlboro that could meld together as well as parts of Wilmington, so. It, it, there's plenty of. Effort and logic to taking Marlboro out of the equation of Newfane and Townsend. And allowing Newfane and Townsend to be a product of another entity of. Including Athens and, and Brookline, so, you know, it's, I did look at the larger picture, and I do see other ways it can be structured, so. I'd be happy to help the BCA in any way possible, that's just my opinion, I don't, you know, want to force anything on anybody.
I think if, well, Leslie, again, I thank you for your input, it certainly has been helpful, and I'm gonna ask Stan. To read his response, and if the board unanimously agrees with that, I think that's what we'll send to the state for our response for this meeting.
Unless somebody goes to.
Unless, yep, so if you want to read off.
Sure, sure. It's headed with suggest reapportionment of line Vermont, and begins with the redistricting commission. Has joined Westminster, Brookline and southern portion of Rockingham to create Wyndham District six. It is asked that this, this be abandoned and that the towns of Newfane, Townsend, Athens and Grafton be joined for a voting district. There is more to redistricting than simply meeting numerical criteria. Westminster and Brookline have very little in common. Number one, there is no direct road access from Brookline to Westminster. Two, the Putney Mountain Range geographically separates the two towns. Three, Westminster has its own school system while Brookline education is accessed in Newfane for elementary students. And Townsend for upper grades. Brookline has no historical association with Westminster, while it was once part of the town of Newfane. Route thirty, a state highway, passes through Newfane and Townsend, while Brookline and Athens are a short drive off of Route thirty. Westminster is accessed by state highway Route five along the very eastern portion of the state. And lastly, six, Westminster has no connections of either a social or services nature with Brookline. The reasons for connecting Brookline to Newfane, Townsend, Grafton are, one. The local hospital, Grace Cottage Hospital, is located in Townsend and both serves and employs people of the four towns. There is a large grocery store on Route thirty, just north of the Newfane Townsend line, which serves this area. There is a building supply store in Newfane which supplies, serves this area. Emergence, three, emergency services provided by Rescue Inc encompasses these towns and not Westminster. After-school activities entail local families of these towns to include sports, theater, graduation, et cetera. Many of the families in the proposed district are interrelated. Six, social events such as Oktoberfest, hospital fair, farmers markets, take place in these several towns. Restaurants along Route thirty serve this area. Places of religious worship are located in Newfane and Townsend. Number nine, Brookline residents participate in the volunteer fire department in Newfane, and said department serves both towns. Townsend has its own volunteer fire department. Number ten, there is a private school with facilities in both Newfane and Townsend, where students who desire to. Attend an alternate means of education or take advantage of a volunteer means of education, excuse me. And Brookline is home of a daycare business that serves the residents of this area. So we've got eleven decent, plausible, meaningful reasons why we. Would probably seek to do the, my proposal, not that it's the only proposal, so I, I just offer those comments.
Bruce, do you like the comment?
I think there's two questions. First, you propose keeping the district the way it is, is that what you're, you're proposing changing it to?
Totally different, to the four towns.
Okay, and you, when you, the way I understood it when you first started with your explanation, it's within a half percent that you were talking about.
When, when you look at this proposed four-town district. And look at the population that you come up with, you come up, you come up with a, a population of. Forty-two hundred and eighty-seven residents. And when you take, I'm sorry, forty-five hundred and one residents is what those four towns and Grafton. Come to for a total, and when you subtract the ideal district population of forty-two eighty-seven. You come up with a difference of two hundred and fourteen people. When you then take that difference of two hundred and fourteen and divide it by the ideal population number. In order to get a percentage of the ideal number that that variation represents, it comes out to be point zero four nine nine. Differential as a percentage, which is almost perfect, almost perfect.
I understand, that's a very good analogy.
All right, if, if everyone is in concert with what Stan is just right to us. I think at this point that we have fulfilled the obligation of the Board of Civil Authority to address our concerns on the redistricting. If anyone else has any more input, now is the opportunity to say something. If not, I'm gonna delegate Stan to respond to the Board of Civil Authority feedback form. And submit it to the state before the fifteenth of November, so that our voices can be heard. Leslie, again, I thank you for your input, it was, it's been a pleasure to meet you. And also, I, I realize you're a busy schedule, but it was nice for you to join us tonight.
Well, thank you all for your service to our town, towns.
Well, thank you very much.
Leslie, thank you very much for everything you've done for this district, and if, if this current scenario ends up being the final verdict. I, I think we're well-served by everything you do and everything you represent for your community and give.
Yeah, just want to end by saying we have a whole nother year to go, so keep in mind, I'm just gonna still be your rep for another year.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear that.
Take care.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting, so. Bruce, you, you move to adjourn me, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjarring the Board of Civil Authority meeting, signify by saying aye. Okay, the meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.
Take care, Joe.
Thanks, Joseph.
Thanks, Joseph. All right, thank you, everyone have a good one.
Okay, so, I'm looking to. Thanks, Dan, that was really great.
Dan, that's fantastic. And I think it's an excellent proposal.
Yes, it's.
I assume there's no way that it's gonna happen.
Well.
Because it makes far too much sense. So therefore, it's due, it's due because it makes so much sense, but it would be.
And government does not.
I mean, there, again, if you look at the map, there are other ways they can.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So it's all a matter of how much flack they get.
Well, and what is, the only thing that really breaks.
I'm just gonna end this meeting.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, I thought you already did.
Oh, I thought you already did.
I need to fall. I don't know how we did before, but we'll address that when we get back.
Sorry, I'm gonna, um, we start recording and start the meeting.
And I'm gonna make a suggestion also, just as we go through it. If we decide on things, we decide on, I am willing to volunteer to plug them back into the spreadsheet version of this.
Oh.
So that we can then afterwards.
That's a good idea.
Fantastic, thank you.
And also.
Recording in progress.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to begin this evening's special budget meeting for the town of Brookline. It is uh six thirty-five P M on November.
Nine.
Ten, ten.
I'm sorry.
Here we go. All right, so I guess we'll start, we have in front of us our general town fund one.
Can Helen hear us?
Helen, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, okay, that's good, thank you. All right, so um.
Just wondering one other thing, since she's doing us a favor. Might be listen to what she has to offer, first, she doesn't like to say anything at her radio.
Yeah, right.
All right, that's.
I don't know if that makes any sense to her.
Where is the picture for the start video?
Um, I can start, we can, start video. Here we go.
Okay.
That's it. Okay, so Helen, um, we're gonna ask you if you wanted to share anything so that we don't have to hang around for the next hour. But if you have some some items of of interest or concerns that might be important to us as we go forward in the budget season for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, that would be great.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of input because I don't know where the expenses were last year or what they will be coming up. Um, I think that you guys got a letter from C T I from Su- from Susan with an estimate on how much for the mapping.
Right.
You might want to think about adding another four hundred and fifty dollars to that for the online version. And the advantage to that is that um it when changes are made to parcels and boundary lines, they'll be updated live. In real time, otherwise, it will only be like once a year, like it is with the desktop version of Town View.
Ah, that's a good point, so it would actually get instant updating.
Right, right, the Town View and and the um the state website would still only be updated once a year, but. Um, if we get to do the um the C T I version of online, then it would be updated real time as she makes the changes.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
And I don't know exactly the cost on that, I think that it's four hundred and fifty, I I sent her an email, but I didn't hear back. Um, I'll probably hear back on Monday, but my guess is it's probably um the same rate for all the towns.
Okay, um, Helen, one of the reasons I invited you uh is that I wanted you to give an idea of. How many hours do you think your position is gonna require to do it efficiently? That's one of the reasons I invited you, because uh the last couple of years has been a little gray. And and I want to include, you know, the camera, Nemrick and so forth, Nemrick is gonna increase by three percent. So our dues is five thousand dollars, so we add three percent to that, that's a hundred and fifty, so that'll be fifty-one hundred and fifty dollars. Also, if we add to Nemrick, the fact that I'm considering the cloud having the talent on the cloud, which has so many advantages. In today's world, which will cost approximately another seven hundred and eighty dollars a year. Uh, the cloud loses the opportunity to access Nemrick from anywhere on any computer.
Right.
Which makes sense because the world being what it is today, uh, it works, you use it in Townsend, and what's your feeling about that?
I think it's great, I mean, I can send Lister cards anytime, you know, day or night, I don't have to be in the office, I can. Do some research or run reports or anything I need anytime, anywhere. And I think that's wonderful, and I don't have to worry about how many computers we have access to.
I have a question.
Write them down.
Is Nemrick going to be changed, isn't there a new contract coming out, and Nemrick is now?
Nemrick is joined forces with another organization, but Nemrick is still Nemrick. And they submit a a dues package, they doubled last year. We went from twenty-four hundred to five thousand dollars, which we did last year, and that was to be expected. With that increase has also been with the new organization they've joined forces with. Uh, many upgrades, which, you know, Nemrick was a little antiquated. But uh it's now coming up to speed, and it's a system that everyone's familiar with, a a lot of towns, most of the towns. In Vermont use it, I know you use it, Helen. Uh, yes, as it's corpse, yes, but for the most part, I in my eleven years using it, uh, I'm pretty satisfied with it.
I think that the um the state is bringing in new software that will run in it alongside Nemrick. So and it's certain parts of Nemrick will feed into it for the grand list, but Nemrick's not going away, neither is Camma. And the new software that's coming in will not be any cost to any of the towns, the state is funding it.
Right, so getting back to what you think of how many hours to efficiently efficiently. Run the uh Lister's office in the town of Brookline. And considering, you know, I I certainly enjoy having you here, and you've done a lot for us, but we have to think about, you know, no one's gonna be here forever. But so in your opinion, what do you think is, you know, the the amount of time to do the job efficiently?
Yeah, I wish I had an idea, I know that I looked at my um last paycheck, and it looks like I've got seventeen hundred dollars so far for Brookline in time. I and we're about six months in, right, so that should be half, but I don't think that is. It could be half, but it's hard to tell, I don't know how much time Mike has put in. And we will have a lot more properties that we need to look like it, look at in like in March, which will add more time, I mean, I've. I I really have, um, I have no clue.
Well, I'm looking at at a current nine hundred and three dollars so far, this uh period so far, and I I don't. Does that truly reflect the from July, August and September? July, August, September and October, does that seem?
I don't know, I was looking, I don't have that number, I can look at the pay stub, and I can see that since April, when I started, there has been seventeen hundred dollars, I didn't notice how many hours.
Okay.
But again, I don't know how much was put in the last couple of years, and I don't know how much Mike has put in.
Okay, how many hours are you doing right now?
Uh, um, right now it varies, I figure it's fewer than it was, so I think I'm doing like three or four a week maybe. Um, and it will, I mean, it'll go up and down, it depends on if there are transfers, and I'm trying to do some cleanup. Um, so that whoever, you know, eventually takes over or comes in will um have a good base database to start working with. But I don't know, I mean, at seventeen hundred for the last six months, I don't think that that's really half, I think that that it will be more than that. For the last six months, but again, I really have no idea, I don't know how much was spent in the past. So it's hard to, it's hard to guess.
Helen, when the end of the tax cycle comes and the new grand list needs to be created. And you're sending out uh changes of assessment and the rationale for.
Right.
And you're looking at the uh the current use report when it's come out.
Right.
Make sure, right, is is there even a possibility of estimating? What that does in terms of hours needing to accomplish those things come the end of or from like April on to the end of the tax year?
It's hard to tell, because last year when we did it, it was all brand new, because it was first time we'd been in the town. Mike goes the current use, I don't know how much that is gonna change to be the new software, and some of the things that for their final. Um, you know, for the end of the year are gonna be done on the new software, and I don't know if it's gonna be faster, I mean, you know. More time or less time, in theory, eventually it'll be less, but for the time being, I don't really know, they we haven't seen any hands-on yet. I mean, I hate to be, I hate to be so um vague and and unknown, but I really have no clue.
Well, you know, if you said that you did seventeen hundred dollars in six months, the total budget for the year is three thousand two fifty, so that's certainly doesn't sound like enough, sounds like.
Not with the added.
Not with the extra things that were doing, so that needs to.
So I'm looking.
I don't think that that would be enough, especially if you guys do bring in somebody that will be learning it, and I'd be training them too. But at that point, you might, in that, at that point, you might wanna switch me over to not being a Lister and just being an outside contractor, I mean, that's. That depends on you and how you guys do your bookkeeping.
Out of curiosity, I don't know if you can allow to say this, but what does Townsend allow for their Lister's budget?
I think that we're, we haven't, they haven't finalized the budget, last year, I think we had twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah, we seem pretty close.
But they're bigger.
Right, we're about um two thirds, I think you guys are roughly a third of one of the size of Townsend.
So we're ten thousand, so you know, so I'm I'm thinking six or seven thousand for us to be adequately funded for this position in our town. Yeah.
That's several.
Well, again, the prior listeners.
Is not frequently attended, you're correct.
Right. But I don't.
It is worth noting that last. If I'm reading Samara's comparative budget report. Right, well, in the last fiscal year. Um, even with the inactivity that we had had for a good chunk of the year. We were. Thousand dollars over budget.
For Lister's.
We spent forty-two thirty-two fifty.
Yeah.
In F Y twenty-one. On Lister's. Which is just an indication, and and I'm going back, back in. As far back as I can see on this, which is maybe F Y eighteen or something, we used to budget forty-four hundred dollars for Lister's. We've steadily dropped that over the years because.
It was not.
It was.
But so it's not like we weren't several years ago, perhaps, I'm speculating. But perhaps several years ago, when Lister's were working more actively, we were probably spending. It was probably costing us four or five thousand dollars.
And now, when of course costs have just gone up.
With Nemrick doubling every. Complications of things, so. I think.
That makes sense, I think so, a lot more sense to make with that, yes.
I would think five or six at least is probably. An idea, and to Helen's point, I mean, if we find, hopefully, we can find multiple people. There's gonna, she's gonna, she's gonna have to train them, so it's gonna be more hours collectively. For a while until people can get up to speed, so it's gonna be even higher than we're, than it currently is.
All right, here we go.
Well, I think that gives us some information when we get down to that point to to talk about that based upon this information.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to add Helen's input because it was important, uh.
I mean, I wish, I wish I could be more helpful, but.
No, that's very helpful.
No.
You did very helpful, let me tell you, we're very pleased to have you aboard and helping out, uh, you caught us up quite a bit, so thank you so very much.
You're welcome, I'm enjoying it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Ellen.
And you can always hang out, hang out and stay to our budget meeting if you want, or you can go and have a whole night.
Didn't we, so didn't we catch?
Birthday cake for someone who's not birthday anymore.
Oh.
Did we, so did we or God, you have a, I mean, I know you talked about Nemrick, the increase in Nemrick costs.
Yeah.
But then there were other costs related to.
Yeah, there's some associated costs like um of the mapping company that we use in C T S I or.
Okay.
Uh, that's gonna be eight hundred and fifty dollars in terms.
What, right, I mean, I'll just stop you before we get to, because we don't currently have budgeted items for anything beyond Nemrick. I mean, maybe we consider rolling all those into something that we no longer call Nemrick, but we call. Lister software and support or something like that.
Well, yeah, Nemrick is used for all the departments, for the treasurer, from the town clerk, from the. Dog licensing, marriage and everything else, it's all the Nemrick. And that that five thousand dollars is, well, the entire tenant, it's not just the Lister's end of it. Um, so.
I think, um, yeah, I don't know how you guys do it in Brookline, but the mapping is not all for the Lister's either, right, most, a lot of it is, but I think part of it is for the town clerk, right?
Yes. Right, so, yeah, the it kind of overlaps in different departments, but Nemrick and the mapping are. Shared by the town clerk and the Lister's. And whoever needs to access that, you know, whether it be someone on top of track or something else. But it's something that we need to have.
There are things that are specific to the Lister's, which is like the um Marshall and Swift and the Apex.
Yeah, Apex.
Camma.
Yeah.
Are those additional expenses each, or are they part of the overall package?
I'm not sure, I think that they're um billed separately, at least they are, is my understanding.
The Apexes, I can't remember.
I don't think they're very expensive, I think that um, I think that they were like, uh, let me see, for, it was seven hundred and fifty for um fiscal year twenty twenty-one in Townsend. So I think it would be um less for Brookline.
And are those things that we're paying currently?
Yes, we pay them.
Where do we put those?
I don't know, to be honest with you, I don't know how, I have to look.
I think a bunch of these things potentially are falling under computer services.
Uh, no, it's not computer services, I know that, because computer services is too wide, guys.
Right, although we're pretty consistently well over budget on what we budgeted for that, so I just wonder if if things like that are getting put in. Because I'm not sure where else they get put.
Part, part of it at one time was going into supplies when it wasn't a great deal of uh of money, but now. The cost have escalated to a point where um it needs to have a separate line, I believe, for uh, you know, these services that we use.
So.
So we need to pin some of that.
Yeah, so we need to then, you're saying as far as. Re-naming, like David said, some of these line items.
Or you can lump them in with the Lister's as set, but you'd have to include the Lister's salaries, the Lister's. A software accounts, and I don't know if that's something you wanna do.
I think we should avoid doing that, and I think in a perfect world, we just create new accounts.
Yeah, we can do that.
For days and we do it, but I mean, given.
We can join accounts.
Just realizing, given our current treasurer situation, that might not be the easiest thing to do, but.
Well, no, that you can just probably.
Now, just creating that's the best thing to do.
And then I'm sure, is there a a problem with deleting it? So it sounds like we're creating an account, but then deleting an account.
Well, you're not deleting it.
Or creating entirely new names.
Basically. Lister would do the sound. If you, if you, if you create an account under that that expenditure, whatever it is, whatever the account code is, you can create another. Subset for that account, but the bottom line is that you don't wanna delete anything because that stays in perpetuality, because. People looking back wanna know what was spent and how it was spent, so it will become inactive.
Yeah.
Yes, inactive is the sort of I was thinking of there.
You know, just to say that someone five years from now says there was an impropriety, and you say, oh, no, 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 you don't really.
So let me, let me ask you this, I I mean, I, although I don't know that we wanna get super dogged down, because we're not gonna get anywhere.
Yeah.
But other than the, so the Nemrick, just looking at the costs of this, well, we still have Helen with us. Nemrick, we think is now gonna go up to fifty-one fifty plus seven eighty.
Fifty-one forty. Yes.
For the cloud, whatever that is.
So that's six thousand dollars.
Um, but then the other costs that we're talking about for the mapping. And other stuff, are those costs that we currently have been paying something, and they're now just gonna get a lot more?
Which is. Yes. Yes, no, we have been paying.
Personally, I think what would be important would be for us to find out where those costs have gone historically. So that we can either just increase that budget item or decide we wanna create new.
Prior, prior to the mapping, we used D Bernardo, and that cost was fast on in the Lister's. And basically, when I came here, the maps were ten years old, and that was not good. So I called D Bernardo and we updated, the map should be done in our town at least every. So I called D-Bernardo and we updated. The map should be done in our town at least every eighteen months because there are that many changes. It's a lot easier to make small changes, I mean, a small amount of changes and pay a lot less than to have ten years where we had to pay, you know, thousands of dollars to have it upgraded. And it wasn't good for the town anyway. So with the new mapping that we have now, which is connected with the state, Susan Bobswell, who's with CTI, is, gave us a figure of eight hundred, give us a live update all the time. So the state is in concert with the town's borders, property owners and so forth. And that's the ultimate goal of the state anyway. Am I correct, Helen, in that?
Kind of. The, the state, the website, the new program that the state is bringing in is, has a GIS capability. It will only be updated once a year off of the grand list, as will the Town View, which is the desktop version of the mapping. For four hundred and fifty, it would be an online version that CTI is providing that will give live updates as they change. I, I don't know if the, if the state is eventually gonna get to be live, but I, when I was at the webinar on Monday, I confirmed that it is only gonna be updated once a year for the state online mapping.
Okay. All right, so yeah, so basically, there's been some changes and some things that were never done. Until I, I got here and when I asked to have the mapping update, I don't know where they were funded before. But to wait ten years for a map to be changed is, is kind of foolish.
All right, well, Helen, thank you very much for, for signing on tonight and.
You're welcome. I'll be in the office tomorrow morning. So if you guys come up with anything else, then let me know and I will answer it to Guy tomorrow morning.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, well, that was informative. Thank you very much.
Well, I, I, I needed to get that clarified because that, that section was a bit of a mess.
Right. All right, so if we're gonna take a look at this comparative budget report that was printed out on ten twenty nine twenty one.
So my understanding that we're eighty seven nine seventy seven and a plus from.
I don't know what you're talking about. What, I.
Right.
One hundred twenty three thousand?
Yeah, I suppose one hundred fourteen actual. So we.
Oh, okay, I didn't, okay.
Sorry, I did kind of a bit out of context. I'm sorry.
All right, so I, I just, okay, so when we're looking at the, this is the school districts, the mud districts, this is the current taxes net of the.
So, of what in a ratio?
Right.
Sorry.
So this is last year.
Then appropriations.
Right, and then you. Including appropriations. All right, so then if we go down here to the education tax expenses, I think that we can do any right.
No, but we can't do that because we don't have any, any figures.
Any figures.
Because the education district will set the tax, you know, tax package when they vote on it and whenever they vote. So I started with delinquent taxes and I plugged in a number of, of zero because the delinquent taxes should be accounts receivable. They already have been spoken for the year before. That's money that's owed us that we already have considered being part of our income.
Right.
And Samara agreed with that, that language because it, and Frank Rocker also agrees with that. We can't count delinquent taxes as income.
Yeah, because it's taxable and it's due, due to us. All right, so the taxes, uh, zero. All right, then we go down to penalties.
Penalties, I plugged in twelve hundred dollars based upon my experience with the taxes. And I'm looking as a delinquent tax collector, eight percent of the, of, is a, is a penalty that we have. Last year, we had twenty six thousand dollars in delinquent taxes. We're down to less than two, or maybe fifteen hundred. So I predicated that on that, those figures, and that seems to be a logical figure.
Twelve hundred dollars.
Interest is the same issue, based upon the delinquent taxes and the taxes that were paid. I look at it every year and I think fifteen hundred dollars is a comfortable figure to say that we'll have interest or taxes. The worst case scenario, we could have a little more, but better to conservative than to say we're expecting to not ever happen.
So just took.
What you're saying is not on our list, so I'm confused.
Yeah, well, he's increasing it from, last year, we budgeted a thousand dollars for penalties and a thousand dollars for interest. He's saying we're gonna increase the budget to twelve hundred and fifteen hundred.
Penalties to twelve hundred and interest on loans up the, is the same?
Interest on taxes.
Fifteen hundred, yeah.
Fifteen.
Yeah.
Current use dropped down a little bit this year from what I've seen. So I think fourteen thousand is a little high. I think twelve thousand is a more reasonable figure.
Yeah, that's how I need you to say it, because I.
Okay, so that's current use, reduce it down to twelve thousand, okay, state park.
State park parcel, we usually get around three hundred, three hundred, we have three hundred, three hundred thirty four parcels and we get usually ten dollars a parcel, eleven dollars. So basically, I put down three hundred and forty dollars.
And that would be the same then, okay.
The US Refuge sharing thing, that's the piece of land that's owned by the governor of Papua Papua New Mountain. The amount that we get is, is, is comp, is, is predicated on all the United States parks and what they generate for income, and they give a percentage to each little park. That's the Civil, the Civilo de Casio.
Civilo County.
County, yes, park up there. Now, because state parks have not been used this year as much, so I'm thinking revenue will not be as high as, you know, ever. So I just put a hundred dollars there. That's not a big number anyway.
If that makes sense, interesting way that they distribute that, huh?
Yeah. Clerk fees, last year, we had a big bump because it was a robust market. Retail, I mean, sales were going crazy, refis were going crazy. That's a once in a lifetime actual number. I put down the number of, I'm basing it on four hundred pages at eleven dollars a page because we charge fifteen dollars, but four dollars goes to the restoration fund. So out of every fifteen dollars we collect, four dollars goes to that fund, which is an item down low. So at eleven dollars for four hundred pages, I figured forty four hundred dollars for clerk fees.
That makes sense. You're making the.
Dog license, we have a hundred and twenty five dogs. Generally speaking, we have a hundred and twenty five dogs. The state gets five, we get four. So I put down, you know, five hundred dollars. If we collect all the fees and everything else, some dogs, we get a little more because you have spayed and you have non-spayed. So the figure, five hundred dollars, I think, is a more realistic figure. We could get maybe another twenty or thirty dollars more, but five hundred dollars is a conservative number and I think it's a good number for the town. Fishing and hunting, most things are done now online, which is a good thing because it's, we only get a dollar fifty per license and it was more of a, a thing to help people, you know, they could come to town, they'd come to your door, hey, could you get me my fishing license? Okay. So right now, I see maybe if we get five dollars in income, that would be a lot.
I think we only did one this year.
We did a couple, actually.
All right, so five dollars for hunting this year.
Yeah, um, copies, again, this is predicated on.
I don't, I mean, are we really gonna budget five? We historically not budgeted anything.
Yeah, I don't, whatever.
When we make the five dollars.
Yes, we had three dollars, then we had nothing, then we had a dollar fifty.
So we're gonna do anything, right? Only on fishing and.
What do you want to?
Hunting, zero, right?
Yeah.
That's fine. That's, that's fine.
Yeah, that's not gonna make a break, because with copies, I'm predicated based on the amount of activity we have here and I think twelve hundred and fifty dollars is a fair price for copies, considering that a lot of the copies, when people come in from our town and they ask to make a copy of their tax bill, so I don't charge. I just think that they pay taxes there. Someone out of town or a lawyer or an extractor at the LTS, they will pay. So twelve hundred and fifty dollars for copies is a reasonable figure. Management, I figure we get ten dollars a license. Four dollars, we did four or five a year, so forty dollars is a, you know, that's another one. Birth and death certificates, there's something wrong with these figures in here. She's showing none. Basically, God forbid, there's a death, you know, the the funeral parlor asks for maybe six or seven certified copies because they need to do it different places and so forth. We get ten dollars a copy, so I'm putting down a hundred dollars, I'm thinking ten copies for birth and and unfortunate death certificates.
So are you saying there's something missing here and you don't know why?
Uh, yeah, I don't believe that. This is, where it says actual and the floor says zero.
Yeah.
I'm almost sure that you did a few, but I don't know where that went. Records restoration, this is what I talked about earlier, where we get eleven dollars. We get fifteen dollars a page, four dollars goes to the record restoration fund. And so I base that on the four hundred pages, four hundred times four, sixteen hundred dollars. And then from there on, all right, the donations, I don't know, whatever you wanna do there. Election grant, we do not have an election grant. Last year, I was able to secure a five thousand dollar election grant, which we use for our computer, our television, the mouse control and some other things, the generator. So that we don't have this year.
Those noises you caught are under control.
I'm sorry, right?
Those noises that you caught are under control.
That's under control. All right, so that's, I'm interested in investments. I'll let you take over.
You're very active.
Okay.
I can, I, I, if you want, I can continue what I've done on go to page two and select board.
What happened to investment?
No, I didn't, I didn't do that. You guys can, if you want, you can look at that.
Interesting investments.
We've always budgeted ten bucks.
Yeah.
Thank you. And that was a fine.
This goes.
No.
Yeah.
And bring up interest and stuff.
And refunds.
Uh, refunds and miscellaneous revenue. Refunds, I'm not sure what that entails, but when someone overpays their property taxes, we have an option to use to apply it toward next year's revenue or refund them back. I don't know. I'm not sure what this refund miscellaneous other things is. I, I don't know.
We never budgeted anything.
Okay.
All right, so we won't budget it now.
Uh, the select board, that's, this is what I'll let you folks make. I wanna read.
This, this is.
So we're noting we're now in expenditures.
Yes, we are now in expenditures. We're applying on the select board. It's listed six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars without any change in salaries. That will remain the same.
This is for me.
Right?
That is, that's good to me.
Six thousand five hundred and fifty.
Town clerk, I have figured in twenty four seven ninety five, which is twenty one hours a week times twenty one seventy five, and then there's twelve weeks a year that I'm here on Saturday morning for four hours. So I incorporate that, that all comes out to twenty four seven ninety five. And that's based at the rate of twenty one seventy five, which I have. And again, I don't know what the select board wants to do with salary increases. There has been a substantial cost of living in our town, in, in state, I should say, and nationwide, we're five point nine percent cost of living, so I don't know. Most towns do a two or three percent interest, a two, two or three percent raise on all their employees, you know, that's what most towns do, some don't, some give more. So I don't know. What I gave you is a figure predicated on twenty one seventy five, which I can still live with and I guess going forward, the next town clerk, you'll have to argue that within that area.
All right, I, I do think that as we move through and I can't say percentages, what do you think about changing your percentage rates to salaries? I know that's one of my concerns, salaries for treasurer, listers, auditors. I know insurance rates are going up, equipment costs are gonna have, and maintenance costs and utility costs are all going up.
Yeah.
So whether we're paying for the municipal towns or the individual people who are working for the town, it's also.
Well, the, the thing is to make the, 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 the compensation attractive so that other people may be interested. You know, if you're, if Walmart is starting off at eighteen dollars an hour and you're offering a lister fifteen dollars an hour, that's not very attractive.
And there's statutory requirements and penalties that said they can acquire, as a lister, that a clerk at Walmart is not gonna experience.
Yeah.
Responsibility scale is incredibly different.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm just trying to give you, you know, for instance, and, you know, sooner or later, as much as a small town is so difficult to budget because we can only comply so many ways.
Two percent, I would, uh, my final offer would be concept two percent.
I, I was thinking, actually, before that, my nap, that's what I was considering here, looking and talking about two percent.
So the one thing I'll say is that since I've been on the board, we have not increased, we haven't done increases for any of the positions without reviewing the VLCT compensation study for that year.
Well, that's.
To see where everything, right.
That is available now. They just, it came out.
Yeah.
Well, I'm.
So what I'll say is, last year, when we went through the budget cycle, this was brought up.
Right.
I went through and reviewed everything in the compensation and then came back with suggestions of increases. Worth noting, we increased all of these positions a year ago.
Yes.
I'm not saying we increased them as much as we would have liked, or as we should have, but we did increase all of these a year ago.
Yes, we did. We did that.
Um.
But this would be not for, this would be for twenty twenty two.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm sorry, we did, we increased it during last year's budget cycle, so for the, the budget.
So this is a new salary for them now.
Yeah.
Right, this would start July one.
This was July one of twenty twenty two, is what we're talking about. So I'll just say from, on principle, I don't think we should be discussing a percentage increase without having analyzed the data from the state. Because that does change from your view. I don't think it's going to change. It will have changed in a way that we will suddenly say, oh, I don't think we should increase that by two percent. I'm not saying that, but it's an exercise that I think should be done.
Okay, so I, I, I plug in my figure based at the rate of twenty one seventy five. All the figures I'm giving you are based on the same rates that we have going in this meeting. If at some point you wanna change that by a percentage or anything, you can do that. So however you.
Well, that's, and I'm, I'm not, I'm actually, I'm addressing because, you guys were talking about increasing my two percent, I'm just saying. I think.
So I, I, I'm at the twenty one seventy five, I'm at twenty four seven ninety five for the hours. I just explained which the hours I do now.
Twenty four seventy five?
Yeah.
Twenty four seven ninety five, right?
Twenty five, yes, I'm sorry.
Seven ninety five.
Twenty four seven ninety five.
All right, I'm gonna, we'll take this based upon the current rates and we may come back and modify this at any time. I'm not here to do that.
The treasurer, that's a, a pretty much up in the air. I don't know how that has worked out, but I'm gonna go to the delinquent tax collector because I am the delinquent tax collector. And it's based on a hundred and eighty two hours a year at twenty one seventy five, and that comes to thirty nine fifty eight. I don't always use it and basically it was there so that if I do a lot more hours in town clerk, then I could, you know, it would balance out with the money that I didn't use in the delinquent tax collector.
So leave it at four thousand?
Uh, I have thirty nine fifty eight.
So I wanna ask a question, and I don't want to have a spiral too far out of control. It's a question that I think needs to be asked. In a world where you were no longer the delinquent tax collector, which is entirely a possibility, if you were to become the treasurer. Because my understanding is that I don't, you cannot be both.
Oh, yes, no.
So you would have to have a different delinquent tax collector. So just looking at a world, just.
Well, let me just reflect that assumption, that the delinquent tax collector and the treasurer can be the same.
Can.
Yeah, and the tax collector, yeah.
But not town clerk.
Yeah, no, town clerk, treasurer, delinquent tax collector and tax collector, you know, they're all compatible. So anyway, but anyway, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did not think that that was the case, but.
The only thing is that in some cases where the towns would like to say that you get the.
They should get the comp, right, so in that, so as long as we don't do the compensation that way, then offices are compatible, okay.
That's what I, that's what I read. Now, maybe I, I may have misspoken, but.
No, that's, I guess, I guess it may be a different, it, maybe it's a, it's a question that doesn't necessarily, I guess that doesn't necessarily have to be based.
Yeah.
If you weren't the delinquent tax collector.
Right, exactly.
That's sad, because you might not wanna be the delinquent tax collector, even if you can be. Is the, let's, and let's just say for the sake of argument that we would compensate the delinquent tax collector at the same rate, just to make things easy. Is that number of hours that we just came, that you, yeah, a hundred and eighty hours?
Yeah, a hundred and eighty two. I've got, it comes in two and a half hours or three hours a week.
Okay, and do you think that that's a?
I think overall.
Overall, yeah, yeah, it would be.
Cause by time.
Yeah, but overall, you think that's a fair.
Yeah, I think that's.
I just wanna make sure we weren't budgeting for you to absorb a bunch of those as town clerk, and then if you weren't the delinquent tax collector.
Right.
Okay, cool.
Right, so that makes.
So that, and now just what?
So should we, should we leave that at four thousand, around four thousand, like it was?
Four thousand. Yes, I think so.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, four, okay.
Right.
But let me change that. All right, the.
Listers, which we were just talking about, we might need to go up to six thousand, you're saying?
Oh, that's something that I. Oh, that's something that I guess you, you guys are gonna have to figure out because if, if you just do, if each lister did three hours, that's nine hours a week if you had, in a perfect world of three listers. So nine hours a week times fifteen.
Three hundred thirty-five dollars.
Times fifty-two.
It's a little over seven thousand.
So, you know, uh it's, I mean, that's our perfect world. Right now, we have two listers and um to be honest with you, I think at this point, uh six thousand would probably, yeah, an okay number. The worst we can do is be over budgeted, but not by mu, it won't be by much.
I mean, it's.
I, I would rather budget a little bit more because I think the lister salary might be something that we might wanna look at it. You know, to know what you're doing right now. So I, I would probably say sixty-five hundred dollars, I'd put it on the line, at least salary, salary.
Then again, let's.
Yeah, let's put it in and I mean, we'll see where we end up.
So we put sixty-five hundred?
We did, we did have to stretch it. Why, why would you transfer?
Well, because I'm not sure how that's gonna work out. I don't know because in the last, we've gone from a, a bookkeeper to assistant uh treasurer to a treasurer and the treasurer's gonna drop some hours so you can get the book. I don't know. I think.
We kinda have to look, like we did, we somewhat did last year, although this of course is gonna change all over again. The last few years, what we've, I think, I guess I'll speak for you guys, but I think you'll agree, we've tried to look at the treasurer office somewhat in its entirety as how much money do we, less, worrying less so about how much we've budgeted for the treasurer and the assistant treasurer as how much we've collectively budgeted for the, for the, for the department. Because it's never been clear from one moment to the next how that might get divided. One thing I'll throw out there, not that we have to figure this out right now, but I think something that has bitten us in the past, over now, we don't have this issue because effectively, everybody who's working in our treasure department is being paid almost the same, close to the same. I think it might behoove us to think of all of the treasure positions at the same rate and how many hours we need of treasury and budget based on that. Because I don't think, in the past, we had an assistant treasurer rate and we had a treasurer rate, but once Samara and Louise, well, honestly, once Louise left, that all got blown out of the water, pretty much. And then for a while, we had a treasurer who was being paid the assistant treasurer rate. And then, you know, it's all gotten very jumbled. And the reality is, I don't think we, or even the people, quite frankly, who are in the treasury, have can put us, could put their arms around exactly how much time is necessary to break it and how much of one person's time is necessary versus another. So anyway, it's a long way around saying we might wanna continue to skip over this for the moment so we don't get too
Alright, I'm.
fall down in speculation and come back to it.
Okay, that's where that we were at the auditors, right?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Auditors, uh I don't know.
I mean, we've, yeah, I mean, we've typically been budgeting around eight or nine hundred dollars. They usually don't spend that much, however.
I did ask the audience to pick up.
We've, we've, maybe they'll start doing bank reconciliation, in which case we might need to bump this back up, cause they might be working more hours.
However, they've only used uh not even fifty percent, uh so I would leave it at nine then.
Yep.
Leave me at nine hundred um uh for the, for the next year and see how that goes.
I mean, the reality is, is even if they do, even if they work twice as many hours as they have been, it's only nine hundred bucks. It's not crushing our.
No, it's not a thing.
It's not a huge number if we got it wrong, you know what I mean? It's not like it's gonna go from nine hundred to five thousand.
No. It didn't, might need to be audited then.
Assistant town clerk, I have uh assistant, eight hours a week, two four-hour days, that's sixteen dollars an hour. And that comes to sixty-six fifty-six when I multiply the weeks and so forth. So that should pretty much stay the same. And that's all part of, like we say, the salaries being what we are right now.
Right.
So then sixty-five?
So we leave that at sixty-five.
Sixty-six fifty-six, yeah.
Sixty-six.
Sorry, I made a lot of praise, no praise.
That's alright, for what I do, I'm happy.
Okay, election officials are basically in that figure, and I, I've asked Samara and I, I'm sure she did. But when I run an election for the school district, we build a school district. And I'm not so sure that that's what happens here. But in this particular year, because we had so many things going on with absentee ballots and so forth, I used part of that five thousand dollar election grant to offset this. So that's not a, a figure that's gonna be it. So I think uh four hundred dollars is an adequate figure. Assistant treasurer, that's elected, and the select board clerk, I, I don't know, twenty-four, uh twenty-four meetings at seventy-five dollars comes to thirty-six hundred dollars. I don't know where these.
No, it's eighteen hundred.
Thirty-six hundred?
Twenty-four times seventy-five?
No, twenty-four times, oh, twenty-four times, I don't know, do the math, I'm sorry.
Eight hundred. Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
Okay, what was I thinking? Twelve?
Well, if, if, especially if we do special meetings or.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, okay, well, yeah, that's great.
Um, did you say the assistant treasurer, we didn't touch on yet because we said the treasurer not breaking that down.
Yeah. I think it would make sense for us to discuss the group entirely.
Animal control, who's now, who's going through the five hundred dollars? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Would you bar for that? Thank you.
That's the only thing we gotta do with the money.
The town clerk restoration, so what happens there is two hours a week that Gwen is doing the photocopying of the records to put them into digitalization. If we had four, if we had used a couple like CoFile or COT, it would cost us a ton of money. Gwen is down to book twenty-one now, so she, we.
Twenty-two.
Okay, twenty-two. So two, uh we have four, we're up to forty-two now.
Yeah, forty-two.
I started at forty-two and I'm down to twenty-one.
We're going backwards.
Oh, right.
So we've got twenty-five, thirty is digitized already, which we're only spending two hours a week. I mean, Gwen is doing it, it's kind of a.
What takes so long is you have to, you have to input everything as a new record before I can copy, before I can download it into the system. So I have to input all the information before I can even scan it in. And that's what takes so long.
And, and is there, did we hear that there's a, another program for this that maybe this could be?
Well, there could be part of A A, the.
Our, A A R, okay, A A R.
A L P, right, no, that, that art money can be, but again, you know.
Yes, that's right. Now we need to budget what we have to leave, we decide that, okay, thank you.
So, so the sixteen sixty-four is two hours a week at sixteen dollars an hour. And I think that's a reasonable thing, uh it's.
So assistant town clerk, for restoration.
You've got us for twelve hundred.
Yeah, I've got it at sixteen sixty-four because it's two hours a week at the new rate of sixteen dollars because last year you got raised. Oh, yeah, I guess, a lot of praise, I gave originally.
You, you don't dare say.
Anyway, so sixteen sixty-four uh is the figure that it's when, you better check my math again on that.
Um, no, it's okay. I guess I'm just, I mean, we would have we would have factored the rate into this last year also with the twelve hundred, cause we had decided it at that point.
The animal control also.
So.
Yes.
I'm not sure why, why we're increasing it.
Well, it's two hours a week.
Right.
At sixteen dollars an hour, but you better do my math because I, I guess I screwed up that two hours a week.
Sixteen.
Thirty-two times fifty-two.
Uh yeah, I guess I'm just saying that we, we had the new rates last year and we budgeted twelve hundred.
So what do we budget?
And we're through four months, we're at four sixteen.
Again, some of these, I'm curious to.
Times three would be slightly over twelve hundred.
So I don't know, um.
Shall we uh look at fifteen hundred or?
No, it's sixteen sixty-four, it's two hours a week.
Okay, two hours.
And it's sixteen dollars an hour, and what does that come out to?
Sixteen sixty-four. We can math it.
Okay.
So, um, July, August, September, October, four months, it's sixteen sixty-four. Yep, that's what it would be, or sixteen times four is sixteen sixty-four.
You, you can.
Well, no.
No, that's, it would be four sixteen times three, cause it's four months.
July, August, September, October, oh, you're right.
A year is twelve months, not sixteen months. So it would actually be, it would be twelve forty-eight.
Well, again, I'm, I'm curious, there's been some things that are not showing up in the payroll that uh this I don't know if they're taking that money, you know, I, when Samara was here, she knew to take that two hours that we put on the payroll and put that as records restoration. I think possibly they have been included in Gwen's payroll as part of her annual payroll. I mean, do you underst, you understand what I'm saying? She, she gets eight hours a week working for the town. Then she gets an additional two hours a week to do this. But that two hours was supposed to be a separate entity on a paycheck. I'm not sure it always went in there. It could go into the other thing for.
In binding, yeah.
So technically, then you're saying if there is two hours a week or fifty-two weeks, sixteen dollars an hour, it should be.
Sixteen sixty-four. Okay, we, let's increase it to sixteen sixty-four.
Okay, room commissioner, let's just stipend to five hundred. Payroll taxes, um, um, is this like an average?
Yeah, well, it'll, it'll, yeah, it's predicated on all the other numbers, yeah. So until we figure out the treasurer numbers, we won't really be able to figure that out. It'll go up.
Same thing with payroll service fees, or is that something that's a consistent?
No, that's, that's not exist, it's not, uh, that's, I don't get changes every time we do, you know.
So not budgeted right this moment?
Not a disappointment, uh.
Supplies and postage, uh forty-five hundred dollars.
Well, but we've, I don't think we've ever, well, what I'll say is, we've always historically, or at least in recent years, budgeted twelve hundred for it.
For payroll.
For payroll service fees.
Oh.
I mean, whether those might fluctuate because the payroll, because we've switched payroll companies multiple times in recent years, but I guess what I'll say is, we've never been more than a few hundred.
Well, I'm looking at the actual, well, last year, which was fifteen nineteen. And I wonder why there was that, we got six thirty, times three would be eighteen hundred dollars, correct?
Eighteen ninety, yeah.
Uh again, um.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like the, in twenty in FY twenty twenty, we were a hundred and something bucks over. Like you said, last year, we were three hundred bucks over. And maybe we make it eighteen hundred instead of twelve hundred?
Yeah, it's not eighteen hundred, I think.
I'm just saying, that's not a number that we can realistically figure out. So we do have to, we do have to, but it's going up.
Well, it's a guess. Yeah.
Certainly, it seems, so.
Alright, so that's payroll services, eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
Supplies and postage.
Uh okay, supplies and postage. Now, we know we've had a big bump in postage. And um this year, I believe um our computers are getting old. They're nine years old, so I'm starting to consider, you know, what I'm, I'm shopping around uh to see what I can get for the best deal. Prices of computers have dropped dramatically for desktops. But I, I can see at least two that have to be replaced, we should. And with the forty-five hundred dollars is okay, but um normally, I've, I've been really careful about buying supplies. I, I shop at, you know, uh Walmart and so forth. So I think that I'm gonna be closer to that forty-five hundred. What I'm afraid of is, I don't mind you to diminish to forty-five hundred, I want it to stay the same, so that would be, be able to get these additional machines.
That makes sense.
So leave it at forty-five hundred?
Right.
That would, yeah, yeah.
Town record expenses, town report expenses.
That's David's.
Yeah, that's David's. Yeah.
Budget six.
Um, yeah, although full disclosure, it's probably the last year in Davina, so.
Maybe we can do a digital thing.
What's that?
Maybe we can be doing a, can you do a digital, uh, uh, I mean, we, we put it on a website. Uh, you know, do we have to mail all these things out, uh, you know?
I don't know. I mean, that's a question for VLCT. I mean, I think the last time we looked into it, I think there was the impression that we probably still had to produce something physically. We don't necessarily have to.
Do as much.
Do as many of them.
Right, that's what Samara said.
Uh, yeah, and I mean, this cost is entirely reprinting the mail. I will remind people, I don't charge the town anything for putting it together or for the software that I pay for to do it.
That's entirely.
But um I think it'll probably go up. I asked the guy to get me a quote, actually, he emailed me the other day, probably to. So my, my assumption is, because everything is more expensive, paper is almost certainly more expensive than it was a year ago.
If you could find.
Trucking and things like that and machinery are all probably more expensive. We probably wanna say eight hundred bucks.
Yep.
Although I guess this is, this is gonna be for me for a year from now. Who knows when it will be then, but it won't be whatever, it'll be somewhere in that.
Let's budget that, let's, let's budget a thousand dollars for a year from now, because if David's not gonna be able to do it, we may be having to hire someone to, to do this.
Yeah, I mean, the printer would.
Alright, I'm gonna put that, I'd like to budget a thousand dollars for the town report. If it's, if we're over budgeted, then we can refund it, whatever, treat them before. Planning commission expenses. Now, planning commission needs to be come active, especially with the ARPA, they're gonna be involved in more things. We're gonna have to do some mailings and some meetings and some brainstorming sessions and community, uh, community involvement. I think that they're gonna need to have, uh.
Was there a grant available for that?
There is, the planning grant, yeah.
From when? Yes.
Yeah.
I don't recall, it's like, you know, twelve hundred or twenty-two hundred or something.
Yeah, I thought there was a, an opportunity for a grant for that.
There's a, um, I mean, if my math is correct, in twenty twenty-three, it'll have to be the town.
Town plan?
To town plan rather, which takes some time, is will be part of this budget.
Right, so that's what I'm, I'm suggesting.
So, yeah, so lots of reasons it should probably, I'm trying to go back to figure out what we budgeted back in the time when they did a town plan previously. Um, I don't think I have, I can probably pull something out of them. Mine don't go, the, the ones I have don't go back that far for what we budgeted for them, but.
Yeah.
I've got a copy of the past plan, the data was produced and I, and I have most of the town reports.
We have town report in the closet right there, so.
Every year's. Hundred and fifteen years.
Um, so the, so you're seeking here, but again, I'm, I'm thinking of the.
It also on the rest.
Five hundred.
I was thinking a thousand, because it's, it's, we're looking for the year of the town plan being produced.
Yeah, they're gonna have to start being a little more frequently than.
Right, you're gonna have to have advertisements, newspaper, surveys and things like that. I'd like to budget a thousand dollars for the planning commission. Election grant, um, twenty-twenty spend.
That's gonna be zero.
That's zero, that again. Abatements, um, do we put into, we, we, I'm going to put two thousand dollars reserved for abate, tax abatement situations and then.
We did, we did before, and I don't know if we utilized any of it, um.
Yes, and, well, yeah, we have utilized, and I think we had a couple thousand dollars, I thought, like we put two thousand dollars onto abatement a while back and then there was the cuts.
Right, right.
For the abatement on their classes.
But but we used it that year, we only budgeted that one particularly year for the abatement, and that was used, we actually, we budgeted for the year after the the fact, it happened in December, we budgeted the next year, but we gave, we took their property and diminished it by the loss of the building and so forth.
Okay. So, so you think it's five hundred dollars that was done in that?
I think it's, you know, I, um, the five hundred dollars, I think is fair, there's two, there's, uh, there's one or two tax problems with, um, delinquencies that, you know, I I don't know how to address it this year, I had to really walk on, on walk easily, because with the COVID, there were certain things you couldn't do, you couldn't do, and and the two people, the one, well, the two people that are that are really troubling me, one has some valid, you know, concerns, uh, they, a whole bunch of things, and if they don't ask, we cannot, you know, we cannot go up to them, and I sent it in a letter saying that you have an opportunity to ask for an abate, you can do this. But if they don't ask, I can't, I can't make it out of it. Uh, you know, and some people are, you know, maybe they're embarrassed or whatever, but, which comes to shove, you know, the town has to collect the money, no one wants to pay someone else's taxes, but if we can abate them and do it legally and so forth, you know, that's a one-time shot until things get better for them.
So is this a sufficient amount?
I think, yeah, I think it's, yeah, because I I don't, I I don't think the town should get into the fact that
Five hundred dollars?
everybody, so, there's a lot of people who are struggling, with taxes and debt are unfortunate things that we have to take care of.
That's right.
And, um, you know.
Alright, then we'll move on to legal notices, and that's just the newspaper advertisement, um, I, six hundred dollars has been in the past, it looks like it went over one year, but, um, is this sufficient, I think, at this time?
Um, I don't know, you 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 see the, yeah, the only thing we've been there are our RFPs.
RFPs, the.
RFPs.
The RFPs, yeah.
And and we try to shorten them up by saying, please see the website, to save some money on that, so let's do the six hundred dollars again.
Exactly. And that works. Because they're just showing seventy-two dollars and ten cents.
That was for the 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 electrician, that was a ranked advertisement, the electrician RFP.
But I know. But there was more than seventy-one dollars.
Yeah, there, that's that's.
No, it's not regular, yeah, so there's, we we have the.
You put out the RFP for the sand.
Yeah, 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 it's a number of.
And honestly, one of them is two hundred bucks.
Exactly, so there's a couple of.
This is probably, yeah, right.
They're being put in the wrong account or something, I'm not sure.
You mean for this, the seventy-two ten is, you're saying that?
That number's not correct.
Okay, it's two.
Doesn't seem like it.
Unless they're putting it, they're putting it somewhere else and, you know, the orders will find it, I guess, at some point.
Okay, thank you, alright, uh, seminars, I don't think we're having enough, uh, many of the seminars are now being, uh, webinars, and unless it's, um, someone has a fee of forty-eight dollars or something like that.
Right, and we're a member of, uh, VLCT, so we get a very reduced rate, and, you know, a lot of us are seasoned, so it doesn't, you know, we're not really looking at it, whereas a new team would say, hey, I wanna go, we don't wanna do that, but, um, they're in.
I'd like to, I mean, I'd like to reduce the standard.
Yeah, I do, right, people are not gonna have physical seminars.
Yeah.
Ever, again.
No, it's all gonna be virtual, that's just never gonna happen.
I was thinking about reducing the standard to three hundred dollars.
That's amazing. I mean, if we ever, I'm just looking back to see what, like, what's the most in recent years, it would be, um.
I think they're, you know, they're forty-eight dollars sometimes.
Yeah.
Um. Um, in FY twenty, we spent eleven hundred dollars, huh?
Well, part of that was the listeners going to a number of seminars, uh, that were important at that time, um, I I remember that.
But like you say, even if people do a bunch, they're all gonna be things on VLCT webinars that are maybe forty bucks a pop or whatever.
Correct.
Yeah, so sorry, you said three hundred?
I said three hundred.
That makes sense.
Miles and travel, um. I I think we should have something in there, maybe a hundred dollars for for mileage and travel, cause it's, that would cover several hundred miles of of people going to seminars, so I put, uh, two, uh, what am I supposed to say?
Yeah. Hundred dollars.
One hundred dollars. Town office electric, I know it's gonna go up, it's, everything's gonna be going.
Uh, well, for the, that's another reason it will go up, because now we have AC, and we are using that during the summer, and that does require a little more electricity.
And I have to say that ARPA will allow us to do other things that might enhance the living, the environment here in town hall that will make the power, power good, so, um.
But by the same token, a kilowatt hour rate has increased already, so I know that, um, even though it's, uh, you know, a little less than a penny, but it all, it all adds up.
But you put it at eleven hundred dollars and it's actually.
So we got four nineteen, if we do that three times, it's twelve hundred dollars.
Like a, you're already on pace for thirteen hundred.
Yeah, thirteen hundred, I think would be.
Okay, so one thousand three hundred dollars for town office electric.
Well, I was gonna say, I think we should go to fifteen hundred.
Yeah, I think so.
Because you think about it, the things you're talking about, we haven't had, you know, we haven't had an AC here for an entire.
Right.
Some, I'm not getting them remotely, and just, and, yeah, I I think it's realistically, I would go with fifteen hundred.
Okay, that's fair enough, recline church, um.
Is is that part of their funding, this is something that we, in the general.
This, we we pay this in our general budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's always been, I mean, I've, I think every year we have a discussion about whether.
So we got two fifty ninety times three, it's two ten right there.
So, um, two fifty, or maybe we should say a three hundred, let's say a three hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I think if anything, you know, that place is gonna be used more.
Might wanna increase that a little too. I think so, because they're getting up to where.
Oh, and a renitia requires, uh, electricity too, and they didn't have that in the past.
Not much. Not much.
Yeah, that year, exactly, that's about it.
But but let's leave it at three hundred, if this is something that we need to, uh, look at the following year, and we'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, town office telephone, uh, seventeen fifty.
No, that's a reasonable price.
I have a question.
Yes, yeah.
Did, were you, you, I know he said something about a problem sometimes when there's only one line in here?
Oh, yeah, we can certainly do that too.
Is that something you wanna make? In other words, have two lines rather than just one, cause you said there's sometimes a problem when there's only one line?
Well, there there is a problem.
Well, there is two lines, we have an emergency line, that's an emergency.
Yeah, well, no, the line. We have a line that we use for the alarm system, and we have a line that we have for the fax system, but as far as talking,
Fax.
we have the one private line, which is a landline, which we used, we installed a couple of years ago, in the event we lost the internet and electricity, most of the time, landlines always stood up, you know, they didn't go down too fast, we still have it, so we do have two lines, basically, um, I would like to speak to, uh, what's his name, Marty, so, what's Marty, Marty Grimes, who has Southern Vermont Telephone, and he sets up a lot of these places with two and three lines, so that the treasurers could have a mailbox, the listers could have a mailbox, so that, um, when someone wants to speak to someone in the lister's department.
They press one one one, or they press two two two, like like a Linden Regional.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly.
With a line call on a line.
I mean, you know, this has worked for a lot of years, but it's it's getting old now, because things are changing, uh, you know, more activity, more things going on. Um, I think it would be advantageous for the town to have a line for the cert, for the treasurer and a line for the listers, and the town clerk a separate line. Um, and I think it can be done, I don't know what the cost might be, but I could have Marty Grimes come in and give us an estimate of what he thinks it might cost, and, you know, it it's a, it's a big job, it's not.
And an update on the phones, that would have to be, but they're getting a little.
Yeah, I mean, everything, you know, has a lifespan, but the bottom line is the convenience, so that people are getting the right phone calls, because Samara would call VLCT, and two days later, VLCT would leave a voicemail on this line by, it's, you know.
Well, a couple of times I picked up the phone, somebody's been on the phone, and I didn't realize they were on the phone.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, I I just think it's something we could go, so anyway, getting back to the, the telephone, um.
So you want to leave, wanna leave it, you open, and, um, like you had an answer, we can.
Yeah, and then we might be able to use some of that that money for that grant that you're talking about, the, you know, the Uncle Joe grant.
Mm-hmm.
Some of that could be useful.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, so, um.
So seventeen fifty, I think, uh, you could stay at this point.
Seventeen fifty?
Yeah, that was just what it was in that.
Yeah. From how it's split, yeah.
Alright, town office fuel, can we talk, this is, um, heating fuel?
Yes.
It's going up.
Okay, but we've always, we've always been a little higher than usual, I mean, we've always, uh, funded.
Budgeted for, okay, okay.
Uh, so, uh, you know, maybe twenty-seven hundred, maybe, I I don't know, I just had fuel delivered today at three twenty-five.
I know, like, that's not what I paid, what I paid about three, four weeks ago.
Really?
So, and it's not getting lower.
No, it won't get lower for a while, then it'll go down, but not, not for a while.
And using the office more frequently for meetings and so forth, uh, I try to, you know, cut down the threshold down.
So three thousand maybe, instead of twenty-five hundred?
Or leave it at twenty-five hundred, cause.
I mean, we've, for what it's worth, we've.
Always up at around fifteen hundred?
We've, we've, yeah, seventeen, a couple of years ago was seventeen forty-four.
So twenty-five should give us.
Twenty-five might have enough buffer in it for a little bit longer anyway.
Yeah.
Based upon what we've seen.
Based upon the way it's, it's.
Computer service and maintenance, um.
Uh, that's Dan Neal, that's, uh, basically, we now have a laptop that we include that's part of the program there. Eight hundred dollars, I think, a year for all the security, all the support, everything else, it's a well-spent money.
We budgeted way too low last year.
Uh, so, uh, computer services at nine hundred is is probably erroneous, the number, sixteen hundred was because we missed the year, or wasn't billed in the right year, but it runs, I think, uh, twelve hundred dollars for for the, um, for all the equipment that we have.
So one thousand two hundred?
So twelve hundred.
Alright, fire alarm, um, program fire alarm, that, has that gone up?
Oh.
What what is this, eight hundred dollars versus five hundred budgeted?
I know.
Did we have to buy new fire extinguisher, no?
No, basically, they come in, they come in and they inspect the, the facility, you know, all the alarm, they do the test, and then they have to put a stamp on it, and that goes to the state, it's a certain amount of work and.
And they take it.
But that's.
So we just did, we just had this done for three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, right?
Right.
That was, that was at school, you're talking town office.
Right. Now, this is the town office, right, so, um.
But he does all three, he does the, he does.
Okay, so having a five hundred is okay, because you're saying the billing overlapped it, uh, in previous year, that's why it's eight hundred and sixty. So five hundred.
We have three eighty-seven or whatever for the school, this will be three eighty-seven a year.
Yeah, I think it's. Yeah, I think seven, seven hundred fifty dollars.
Seven fifty or something like that, I have a feeling in some prior years, when we were, we were okay with five hundred, I think in part because, remember, there was longer time where it was really hard to get him to come do it.
Exactly.
Right.
So I think we went probably, you know, we went longer periods than we would have liked without having to do it stuff, which is why it was so.
Now, do we pay for the school reception?
Yeah, so. I said before, isn't the cash payment?
Yeah.
And doesn't mean, is there, isn't there a fire extinguisher at the church too?
But it comes out of the.
Yes, right, yeah, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't, no, that was all, that was all the school.
That was the.
I think so.
Take care.
It was all daycare.
Okay.
There are two bills, the first one came through forty-five dollars, then the three.
Right, but he, I, we don't have a.
Now it's just a charge him, I think, the yellow was the inspection, do I have that right?
Right. Right. Right.
The way you explained it, so, you're looking.
He has forty-five dollars to charge the bucks.
I'm sorry?
You're looking at a grant total of four hundred dollars, just for the school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And four hundred for us, but that's not here.
No, but that, you can take that number and double it and put it, you know, with the talent in there too.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused, this one is.
You, this, this budget line item does not include the charges for the school for this.
Okay.
Right, we just paid.
That comes out of the, out of the school account.
There it is, okay, so.
That comes out of school account.
But I think Guy's point is, and stands that we can use that as informative to what it is actually gonna cost annually for this building.
I think it's seven fifty. Okay.
And.
That's more for, so seven fifty, that's more, it was a little over four hundred in the school.
Yeah. So I think.
Oh, I thought you said it was three sixty-eight.
Well.
Right, although what I'll say is, it's a much, it it's a facility that has a, a lot more.
I have.
Fire extinguisher, when this, that building is probably overall similar to all the other buildings combined.
So we don't need to go to seven fifty, keep it at five hundred?
Yes.
Yeah, I would think, why do we increase?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess it, it's a little hard to know, I mean, I understand your point about what just happened, they're looking back. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, last year.
Well, the problem with the code three is they're not.
Last year, this line item was eight sixty, now, whether some of that might have been school stuff that didn't get taken out of it, we don't.
Well, some of it, like I said, code three is not consistent, you'll see him for a year, then you won't see him for twelve or fourteen months, then it's, you know, then it's eight months, yeah, it's.
Right. Again, we're only talking about a couple hundred bucks, if we wanted to keep it at five hundred, well, if we're a little over, it's not going to, it's not gonna be, again, we're not gonna be a
Yeah.
we're not gonna be a thousand dollars over, we're gonna be a few hundred dollars over.
Okay, alright, so five hundred dollars for that, now, legal services, I think it's important to maintain
Yeah.
uh, money to, just in the worst-case scenario, and, uh, you know, spend the debts becoming appropriate.
Yeah.
It's probably part of the seven hundred, uh, that we're over, isn't it?
Yeah, it ends up being a big chunk of the surplus, every year when there's a surplus.
Right. Rescue services, rescue services, no, so they're not gonna be, they're, they're gonna not change the rate for the first year of our three-year contract coming up,
We gotta add it in there.
and there'll be a one percent on the second, the third year of the three-year contract, so I think rescue.
One percent.
So the, so for this.
Is it a one percent for this year or this year?
It's zero for the, when I went to the meeting.
For the common fiscal, so for this one?
For the, the up, next upcoming contract, zero percent increase.
Okay, so, so we can stay with the fifteen four eighty-two.
Okay.
Right, let's make, yeah, fifteen five, haven't you wanna do or? Fifteen thousand five hundred, one thousand, fifteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Sure.
Um, fire department services.
We've always given them nine thousand dollars to wash the bridge.
I thought it was a thousand dollars to wash the bridge.
No, that's nine thousand dollars we give them. Yeah, we've done it for years, it's basically a donation, uh, but they.
Yes, to wash the bridge.
And then the other one is the fire department mutual aid, which, you know, we've all agreed that, uh, you know, they were biting off more than they could chew, and the the rates have gone so high.
So ten thousand five hundred?
Uh, right, that's.
Well, what I'll say about that is, we do usually get informed, if nothing else, Harry LeBorne, yeah. You usually gives us a heads up on.
Increases?
What they're gonna be, what to.
Increase it again.
Yeah, although I guess, although he's not, he's he's not really active anymore, so.
Yeah.
So, you're gonna go ten five?
I mean, it has increased year to year, actually, although it's been kind of consistent, so we could probably estimate based on that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So.
So ten six?
If ten five would be right, that's right on, you know, thirty dollars.
Yeah, I mean, in FY twenty, it would, it actually ended up being ten. Yeah.
Eleven hundred?
So what, what, what are we doing?
Fire department mutual aid.
Yes, but I'm just.
Um, uh, I I have down here ten thousand five hundred.
I mean, they will eventually inform us.
Yeah.
Right.
It may not be for a month or two, but they will tell us.
Okay, so.
I would suggest for the moment, we just assume that it's going up, now that it's going up to.
The thing? So eleven?
Ten seven fifty.
Ten seven fifty. Uh, copies.
Zero. Uh, basically, that's, we get, uh, twelve thousand copies a, a month, and, uh, at the end of the year, we double it up, and if it's less than twelve thousand, we don't do anything, if it's more, it's nine cents or point oh nine per copy, but we've never exceeded it.
Right.
And I keep an eye on it.
How's your contract, um?
Okay, that, uh, that's gonna be reduced, because I'm in negotiations with, uh, Synplex, uh, we're paying a hundred and twenty-five and change per month, uh, which includes the maintenance, the toner, and service calls and everything else, the new contract will be a hundred and five dollars, and, um, I'm pretty solid on that, so if we multiply that by
Twelve.
twelve, it comes to twelve hundred and sixty dollars a year, so that'll be, you know, a couple of dollars less, but in today's world, where you can get things to go down, that's a fair thing.
Hard, hard to.
One thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. One thousand two hundred and sixty dollars for coffee.
Two hundred and sixty, yeah.
Town property maintenance.
Um, I don't know what's included with that.
So town property maintenance would be uh the.
Is that the?
Tanner, that would be mowing, it would be moving.
So Bloom doing the uh cemeteries and stuff, or is Bloom does the baseball field?
Town property would be the baseball field, um it would.
The town office?
Town office. Uh Brown's Schoolhouse, we don't, is anybody in the church?
Yeah, the tiger was.
Peter Meyer?
I don't think so.
Peter Meyer was doing.
Yes, he does, but what is, he doesn't do it, we never pay for it, in two years, he may not be doing it.
Right, right, right. Right.
What's the?
The mowing around the church, but just saying, we're trying to identify what is town, town maintenance. Um replacing lights, isn't that town maintenance, the lighting systems and things like that?
Even the light replace them.
No, I'm a motion detector, what we, what, the electrician is coming in, isn't that town maintenance?
Right. Uh no, that's a one-time, that'd be a one-time expense.
Because that's longer. All right.
No, that wouldn't, no, I think town maintenance is, for what we had it for, was the mowing of the baseball field, the town office around schoolhouse. And the cemeteries, I think that was a separate entity.
Yes.
For a solid reason.
Well, and somebody else did the church.
Right.
Oh, yeah, Peter Meyer does that.
Well, because you budgeted for twelve hundred and you spent twenty five and then you budgeted for twelve hundred. And right now, we're at thirty two sixty eight in progress.
At thirty two.
I think, does someone go and do the cemeteries once or twice a year, four times a year?
That's ten, that would be, that's, that has its own line item.
That's correct.
Yeah, they're at the bottom of the page.
So, yeah, I mean.
That's more, oh, excuse me, the cemetery, we did, they did spend at Riverside Cemetery, but it should come out of Riverside Cemetery's account. Money to trim the trees around the fence line, that was done last summer.
Right, but what about the four owns cemeteries?
That's, that's the, that's the two thousand dollars.
Okay, that's uh two thousand for the ancient cemeteries, it would be interesting at some point to know what this thirty two sixty eight is.
Well, I'm wondering if it's the uh the mouse removal, mouse work, it was uh.
No, we charged that to the uh eight hundred dollars to the grant, election grant.
Eight hundred bucks.
Wasn't, didn't come out of town maintenance.
Oh, okay.
Thirty two, what did we do, uh?
Huh?
Could have been, I don't know, unless there's something put into wrong.
Yeah, I mean, maybe there's some, maybe there, maybe some of the.
There's, there are some.
Schoolhouse grant expenses got put into.
Hundred twenty five dollars for the pest inspection around school grounds.
Anyway.
Was that in, was that?
I mean, clearly twelve hundred isn't enough.
No.
Because the last several years, we've been over on that considerably, I mean, just. I mean, probably just the mowing that Tanner now does alone probably takes us over that.
All right, so um I would like to know what the actual breakdown is, and I'm gonna send the treasury, uh ask them to print that out.
Yeah.
And uh meanwhile, so we say um three thousand? There's an error in here somehow.
Yeah, there's an error in there somewhere, but oh, we did something that we don't recall, uh and I. Nothing that we did.
Two thousand.
I say we go with twenty five hundred.
About a hundred for now.
All right, twenty five hundred, I think there's some errors, I agree, I think.
I mean, I, I think the three thousand, I, I mean, it's only four months, so.
It's maybe five. Something's up there.
Something's gotta be up there, but last year, the twenty four ninety five.
Yeah.
Okay, two thousand five hundred.
I'm gonna assume for the moment was maybe accurate, yeah, it's kind of accurate.
All right, so uh two thousand five hundred for town property, now is town trash removal? That was five hundred dollars that we put for the, that that town trash removal or was that recycling center cleanup?
Well, that was, that was what we had originally put for that guy Jutris to go up and take all this stuff, uh at fifty dollars a month.
And dump things, or leave things. Cause sometimes people leave things on the side of the road and he would come and pick them up.
Yeah.
I think we could actually delete that or or archive that particular, it's not funded and um
But yes.
because, yeah, I think we're not gonna fund that and if we, Marcus said that he would help with picking up things, we need to.
Yeah, it's gonna be part of his, you know.
So I'm not gonna fund that line item, town trash removal, um.
Yeah, sense.
Well, I don't know that I agree with that though, because.
It's not the same as, if we go to Wyndham, we recycle, if we take trash to Wyndham, do we buy a forty dollar a year sticker?
We don't.
Oh, no, I ha- I've never seen any billing for that, but it doesn't mean we couldn't do that.
Right, I think we should, I think we should.
I think you should leave it in there because what about Reno?
Well, I guess I'm just saying, if, if.
We have a large.
The, the grants behind this is for somebody to leave stuff, well, like we just talked about the other day, that out by Wyndham Hill.
Yep, yep.
The person has the, I mean, I understand we're gonna have Mark do that, and and I know in reality.
That you set.
Tracking it all this way may not happen, but I don't really, that, Mark's time for doing that really shouldn't be coming out of a highway budget. It should be coming out of this.
Right.
I know realistically, all of the things that have to get put together so that to get accurate, we don't, might not happen, but.
So if we left it there and had him, when he submits his payroll and what he's done, saying this is associated with trash.
Trash removal.
In a, in a perfect world, yes.
Yeah, that would be.
Well, let's try to become perfect, well, we'll, we'll, we'll shoot for that, I'll talk to Mark, we does, here.
Yeah. Yeah, because the reality is there is, I mean, we haven't used it a lot, I mean, the intention, like I says, the intention was to have him, that guy doing it on a regular basis.
Yeah.
And then that sort of fell by the wayside, but that doesn't mean the problem doesn't still exist.
It really exists more.
Right.
And the need for budget, something for it still exists.
When we clicked out the ra- round schoolhouse and I had to go with the dump, that was my understanding.
Right, yep, that, it got used, right, and that's probably what the seventy eight.
That's probably.
Where, where does the money, for Reno Day come out of, what account?
Loss is probably from that.
That Reno Day comes from what?
Was that an appropriation for, did we do a?
Well, I remember we had a discussion about it, we didn't have a warning about it, and what if this might be. Reno Day. Reno Day, did we answer that?
No, I mean, honestly, that ends up coming out of, quite frankly, that that probably ends up coming out of some highway thing. I mean, because it ends up being marked in, I mean, or it ends up, I've never seen one of those bills. It ends up costing us.
I think it built a hundred.
A hundred or two hundred bucks, hundred or two hundred bucks, that probably ends up getting, I don't know, or it ends up going into landfill fees possibly.
They're talking about that too.
Maybe, it might, it might end up going there.
All right, so let's do five hundred, let's keep the five hundred, um and this is something that we might need to talk to uh our uh I forgot how we're gonna handle this, this particular item in the future. All right, five hundred, uh my VLCT dues, is that changing?
Um.
On the eighteen hundred or?
I don't, to be honest with you, I haven't seen anything and I haven't, they haven't mentioned anything about increasing, but every time I turn around, everybody's increasing things by one or two percent.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't.
I don't know for the last year or recent.
Eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred.
Yeah, I think so.
Eighteen hundred dollars, this is an estimate for those dues, uh and the regional dues.
Uh that will go up, uh I'm sure.
Looks like um fifteen hundred maybe, should we put it?
No, I would say fourteen hundred would be more than.
Appropriate?
Yeah.
Yeah, fourteen hundred dollars, all right, and then.
I mean, the thing that's worth noting is that, um for those of you that weren't involved in the budget cycle last year. A number of organizations, including Wyndham Regional, um and including Newark. Uh specifically did not increase their.
Doing for the COVID.
Asks last year.
Right. They.
Because of COVID, so some of these people have gone multiple years now without doing any increase, so.
Expect it to come down the road.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's likely that.
Yeah, it was.
But, cause they held a line for longer than they probably intended to.
All right, very good.
So, sorry, what did we decide on?
Uh fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred, thank you, so.
Network licenses support.
Fifty one fifty?
Fifty one fifty?
But then.
Oh, no, it had plus the eight forty, I'm sorry.
We are seven eighty, seven eighty plus.
I'm sorry, no, fifty one fifty plus eight forty. Eight forty, seven machines at.
I am now eighty fifty.
Ten dollars a piece, seven users, I'm sorry, seven users.
Seven eighty, so fifty nine ninety, let's just go six thousand.
Yeah.
Six thousand for network licenses support.
Yeah.
And and again, um they're gonna waive the setup fee, which is a normal fee to they, you know, to to do this. And again, I I'm running it past you folks, uh I don't wanna make the ultimate decision, but for for all practical purposes, I I really believe that going to the cloud is the way to go.
Absolutely, we need to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy, the number of things that listers and treasurers and up and over have to do, that they have to physically come into this office.
Everyone.
Yeah, they also do not necessarily.
Yes. I'm using login dot com, which costs twenty fifty dollars, which allows us to, I I use it from, at for my home. And I've let the treasurer be the other person to use it, so that you can literally do everything at home that you do in your office.
But it's not for them?
Call login dot com.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, yes.
And um it works, it's excellent, it's the perfect program, but I still think that we need to have this cloud because.
Sure.
It's just the way things are going right now, and it's just.
Not a problem.
So what'd you say, I'm sorry?
Six, six thousand.
Six thousand. So before we jump off of that, though, I do want to bring up, we have the whole additional expense of the mapping stuff, which.
That, that will go into the network, that would go into the listers, again, we haven't decided what you wanted to do with, because the mapping is is not a network uh license and support.
It's. Okay, so are we thinking we build that into the sixty five hundred dollars that we budgeted for?
Or you were gonna do a separate line item for.
Right, well, so that's why I'm bringing up, that's why I'm asking, how are we gonna do that?
Oh, okay. Yeah, that uh.
So that's another eight fifty plus four fifty.
Yep.
So that's thirteen hundred dollars.
That would go into, where do you want to put that fund, how do you want?
I, I mean, personally, I don't think it should go under listers, I think that should be the salary for the listers.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, no, that's.
We don't, we don't build in, you know.
That's all solved.
We don't build in your computer costs to your salaries.
Right. No.
So this should be under, this, that should be under.
A separate line item.
Probably a new line item, yawned.
Software, lister software.
Well, but to your point, it's not exclusively stuff that only the listers are gonna.
Well, they would use it ninety percent of the time.
What is the software for?
It's for mapping.
The map.
And it ties in with the state and so.
Map, state mapping?
We could just call it mapping software.
Right, so.
Mapping software.
Hmm, okay, but no, we're also including Apex and Marshall Swift, which are software programs, tools that the
Is that?
uh listers use, you know about that.
Software tools and programs.
Yeah, right, uh Stan, Apex and Marshall Swift, you're familiar with that, those are tools that listeners.
They're components of the software that the listeners would use, the R X is the drawing program, and the
Yep.
Marshall and Swift is utilizing the cost approach, which I think the state puts on heavy emphasis.
So what do we spend?
And that's the four hundred and fifty dollars, is that so?
No, no, the, the, the eight hundred and fifty is the CTI, which is the mapping program. And then there's an additional four hundred and fifty to go onto that.
For the online version.
Yep.
They update.
Yep, and then Apex is a drawing program, software, Marshall and Swift is a, is so, so those are, I have to find out what those fees are. Cause I don't, there have been some bumps in the fees and they're, they're charged to the town and it comes out of. I thought they may have taken it out of the um listers when they had a, you know, everything was lumped in his listers.
Years ago, the, the uh, both the drawing program and a uh Marshall and Swift were a component of the Nimrock software, so that when you went in and did your cost to.
Okay, but now Apex is.
It sounds like it's being separated out.
Yes, yes.
So that whoever's providing that needs to buy the separate.
Yeah. So we'll have to find that out and I, you know, I'll look that up and hopefully have those numbers for you at the next meeting, but uh I thought the last Apex was uh two hundred and fifty dollars for that software, Cam, I don't know what the hell that is, um. I'll find out, I I'm sorry.
Marshall and shit, Swift should be below five hundred.
Oh, yeah.
Apex would probably be in the three hundred.
Yep, yep.
So we're gonna leave that open as far as the lister software.
Yeah, I'll find out what those costs are and maybe we can be.
Yeah. Well, did you just write?
Just say eighteen hundred dollars.
Uh check Apex and uh Marshall Swift in common. Which is a consumer, I'm sorry, computer assisted mass appraisal program for the listers.
Okay, and then we're gonna create a new line item and. Okay, I guess we might want to decide what we want to call it, which is maybe it's just lister software.
Decide what I want to. Yep.
So list, listing software versus mapping software and tools?
Switching.
Or what, why not? Or would it be soft, just software, because.
I don't care.
Well, I, I, I think, again, you have to think about what is someone gonna read when they see that?
We don't need to draw it out.
And we know what we're talking about, but what do they?
Yeah, I think. If we can need more, yeah.
Yep.
If the city wants to. As long as that's accurate and not.
Yep.
All right, so the new line item, which is for lister software, which might be around thirteen hundred dollars or so, is to be determined after you talk to someone about the Apex and Marshall and Swift.
Yep.
And that, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be, it'll be over thirteen hundred, we're at thirteen hundred before any of this other things.
And then, yeah.
Well, that was in the Nimrock.
Right, so, which Nimrock right now, we say is six thousand.
Yes.
All right, so we have it to be determined for the next one, all right, landfill fees, now this has to do with.
The claw thing of the.
That's for the, the hazardous duty, hazardous waste here, pick up the education.
It's what we still pay solid waste.
Yeah, how does that work, is it membership towns pay that?
Yeah, all the member towns pay it, based on population, um the last few years, it has not really changed. As I'm no longer the rep, I can't be able to.
Yeah.
So that.
At some point, Dan Tower will probably have an idea, but it's maybe a little.
So that's seven forty three ninety two, is that a, a quarterly payment or is that a yearly?
Uh, we don't know, okay.
Um.
Yeah, I mean, they bill us quarterly, so presumably that's.
Wait, uh seventeen forty, yes, so I'm just saying, that's fifty.
That's a lot.
That's quarterly or?
Well, I mean, I, but depending on the timing, that might be two quarters or something. I think they bill quarterly, or do they bill monthly? I don't know.
So you think four thousand would be sufficient or should we keep it at thirty five or?
We have, I think we should question that.
I think we should question that.
Okay.
I think we should question that, uh, maybe get some sort of.
Okay.
It depends on what they developed for their project.
Okay, very good, law enforcement, I still think we should keep that, that, the uh, what is it, ten hours, is it, ten hours a year?
Ten hours, yeah. Then the sheriff's department has changed their fee, I think it's forty eight dollars an hour now for for the policeman and his, and his, you know, his uh automobile and equipment and everything else, so that's going up, there was a letter that was sent out. Uh I think it's in the, within the selectmen's box.
You say what it was?
That's on the reformer.
Yeah, and it was in the reformer too, but I think it went up to forty eight dollars an hour, so if you do ten hours, it's four hundred and eighty dollars.
Oh, I think we, I think this price was based on the state, Vermont state police rate of sixty eight dollars or something, so, so five hundred.
Oh, well, it's.
And that it was, yeah, it was.
Five hundred.
It was fifty one an hour, it's where, which is where we got five hundred.
Okay.
Okay.
So what are we doing with that one?
Leave it at five ten, ten hours, fifty one dollars an hour.
Yeah. I mean.
If you need to, not to surplus them. Recycling collection.
Now, when you multiply that five thousand, five four.
Wait, wait, I lost you on the landfill fees, I feel like we didn't do anything with rate.
Landfill. Right.
That's right.
Uh law enforcement, we have five, five ten.
Law enforcement, five ten. Correct, recycling collection at twenty seven thousand dollars.
Well, five thousand, so that's fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars.
For twenty thousand dollars.
For the year, so we're a little, we're a little below, but it's a hundred and fifty two dollars for the truck to come, so that's once a week, then what is the rate, a hundred and ten dollars?
It fluctuates.
Yeah.
I mean, I haven't seen the detail of payroll lines lately, so I don't.
I I've been carefully on, I called the guys, but.
I mean, it's, it, over the last few years, the rate, the tonnage rate, I think, has fluctuated from.
Oh, yeah.
Anywhere as low as a hundred and twenty.
Yep.
A ton up to a hundred and fifty a ton, although it seemed like it had gone down for a while and was staying down.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's, I don't know.
Guy, that five thousand dollar figures for a quarter, correct?
I'm sorry, I don't think, I don't think we can consider that accurate whatsoever, because that doesn't even make sense, it would mean. I mean, it would mean, I mean, we're on pace for fifteen thousand dollars, which.
That's pretty damn. That's, that's four times on the twenty.
Three thousand.
Last, last year, which.
It's twenty thousand.
Yeah.
No.
Per quarter.
No, this is a, this is, this is not a quarter, this is four months.
This is a quarter.
This is a total.
This is four months.
A life.
Yeah, this is supposed to be four, whether it, I, but I don't, yeah.
Oh.
Life or something.
Yeah. And again, I don't know how.
It may well be really only three months.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Which would make our spend.
But, what we're gonna do is a separate hour still in our budget, like we can.
Well, I think we have to get a hard look at the cycle costs and get an accurate, accurate. Exact figure, because this is guesstimating and when you guesstimate it at twenty thousand, that's a big number.
Yeah, that would kind of watch, yeah, it is. So we're gonna leave it open, we'll find out.
But is there, are we under any requirement to let the citizens decide whether this program will be continued or not?
We do it every year, we say every year, it's a separate article.
We did last year.
Okay, so this may end up being a none of that.
They said, they said yes by one vote.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
No, no.
No?
No, no.
No, last one was two thousand, three thousand.
So yeah.
Last year, last year was.
Was it close? No, it wasn't.
Yeah. Last year was fifteen or sixteen months.
Yeah, it was quite a few.
Okay, I'm just, I get.
Yes, right, the year before.
We know, that's, that's what, let me just say this about that, last year we did Australian ballot.
Twenty nineteen.
And we had approximately seventy people that responded to Australian ballot.
Mm-hmm.
At town meeting, we have approximately seventy people, yet the numbers were so different.
That's so stupid, so bizarre.
I I, you know, I'm wondering like, do people, when they do the Australian ballot, say, no one's really watching, so I can really say what I'm gonna think?
I know.
Whereas in a town setting, oh, if I vote for this, I vote for that, you know?
I know, I, that's true, I think, I think it's varies.
Oh.
Yeah, I I really like it, right.
It has to be considered, yeah.
Alright, let's move on, let's um, so will you leave recycling over or at this time or?
Yeah. Sir.
Okay.
Well, we'll have to see what the actual costs are.
Because I think.
Because it's really not in the budget anyway, if we're gonna, if we're gonna have a separate article.
Well, we still have the budget.
But we still have to figure out what.
We still have to do it, yeah.
Yeah, warning is, yes.
Yep.
Alright, so I'm gonna, we're gonna leave this uh open right now.
I will also add, just in case this wasn't, people didn't know this again, for people who weren't part of it. But what we actually sort of, I think, came to as a conclusion when we. Warned the article for the twenty seven thousand, was actually twenty six thousand for recycling collection. And a thousand dollars that we thought we would potentially use for some kind of.
Security thing.
Monitoring or security of the site, which we have not ended up doing anything with that.
Yeah.
We built in, we built in a thousand dollars explicitly to have some.
Come in and ask you.
Right, yep.
Ideally, you know.
Ability to do that.
Even if we put in solar powered motion detector lights, somebody goes there at ni- at night, like it uh in the winter time, four thirty it start. And so both Mark, Bills and I were at that and so that might be something, that's not more than fifty dollars, so, but yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so that includes a building, one thousand dollars for for additional security.
We'll leave it open.
There, we'll leave it open.
We'll leave it open, yes.
Okay, insurance bonds. What is an insurance bond, what do you mean by that? For for the, for the buildings and for the equipment?
Uh, and also for uh ensuring that that we're protected against uh fraudulent activity and so forth, I think that's what that is. I thought the, I know they're bonded agents, you're saying. Right, everyone has to be bonded.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so that's just the.
Select board member, we all have to be bonded, but it's all under.
One umbrella, which is. It's all rolled up in that insurance.
So, um, this insurance, is this also building insurance in here too?
Uh, I, you know, I.
Buildings, uh, maybe not.
I I think.
Yes, I believe it is.
I I thought it was, but.
So, how about, how about?
I believe it coupled with the line item from the highway. Because we've historically separated, separated them a little bit arbitrarily.
Yeah.
But those collectively, I believe, are are.
Insurance program.
Overall municipal insurance policy with.
I don't see it broken out anywhere else.
Passive, yep, that's what's passive.
So I'm thinking that that, that that insurance needs to go up, because if we do get a piece of, well, when we get a piece of equipment, we're going to have to insure it. And that's going to be an additional cost in the next three years, so.
The other thing is, we will, touch wood, eventually have a newer salt.
Building.
Choke at the garage building, which will embrace it something.
At the garage building, which.
Get value back.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's not, but.
So six thousand, I think.
I don't know exactly how we can.
Gauge that, yeah, I don't know.
Although, so I would say six thousand with the extra five hundred, seeing that we didn't use it all the previous year for some reason, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, we, the thing is, is that what's, what has sometimes happened in past years? Um. Is that the the breakdown between what we, what we put for highway insurance. And what we put for insurance in this fund, doesn't necessarily always get split the same way, so I think. It bounces around a bit from year to year, I'm just trying to see what's in the actuals.
So where does P through Pacific at the VCT? Can we get numbers from them perhaps?
From passive, we could get, you know, all the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and it does change from year to year, I mean, we, I mean, it.
Yeah.
At some point, we should be able to get what they're actually gonna charge us. I think what has hot, what has often happened in the past is we weren't able to get any of those numbers until we had to. So we've kind of.
Well, I just.
Fifty five hundred is, for this part, has been what we've seen to consistently have done the last few years. We dropped it, it used to be six thousand, but I think we realized we weren't, that that was higher than it needed, needed to be.
Maybe then leave it then, so we're not.
Uh, well, you know what, Wayne, can you put, put down a list for me, I just finished a questionnaire that Michael asked me to do the treasurer. In regards to a questionnaire for the insurance community for passive and um. I I'm gonna give Amy a call up there and see if she can give me a breakdown of everything that we're paying, because. To be honest with you, uh, I don't really know, I'm speculating what it is, so I'd like to have a breakdown for workman's comp. Uh, the bonds for, you know, the staff, and also insurance rates for buildings and so forth. They should be able to do, we may have it, but I have no idea where it is, um.
Right.
At some point in the past, I was working with Samara on the evaluation of the buildings.
Yep.
The last time I was on the board.
Wayne.
Right.
And I think, I I know, I believe she had the breakdown down, or whether there's, she's got a special fire port, but even so, that's been several years in the rates of.
Well, we should, I, you know, I think, yeah.
We should know.
Alright, so we'll wait on that.
So you, could you just uh make a note, uh, or hanging up this uh passive? Hopefully she can uh enlighten me.
Okay, um, these, next one, old cemetery lawn maintenance, we we can, we drop this down, um, I think. Thousand dollars would be suitable, um. For that, is that all right with everybody?
Sounds good, yeah.
Off the brain, off the.
Yes.
Um, well, actually, before we do that, I guess, one of the reasons that at time, I'll just say, one of the reasons at times that we. Said that we weren't gonna do that was because I thought at some point it had been determined. That we have a statutory responsibility to spend at least five hundred dollars per cemetery.
Five hundred, yes.
Oh.
So we were keeping it at two thousand.
You're right, you're right.
Because at some point, I think a few years ago, you, you determined that.
I, I was on that. That's right.
Good memory.
Whether anybody would ever, obviously, nobody ever held us, held it to us, cuz we didn't use to budget this.
Right.
But.
Uh.
If we know that, we probably should continue to budget for it.
You're absolutely.
Cuz we got one time of using some of it to put the fence back, that.
Yeah, right, and it, it has been, right, I mean.
Yes, yes. Yes, okay.
And we're seeing kind of back is the good back that you.
Alright, I think, so you remember, I was just thinking, trying to, but you're right, there is a stipulation of.
So two thousand?
I think there was a stipulation that you found.
Yep.
So the old cemetery lawn maintenance is two thousand?
Yeah.
It's for cemetery, it's associated with that. Okay, next, county tax.
Uh, last year, they were late in getting it to us and uh it went up substantially. Um, I I would think that, you know, probably sixty five hundred dollars, I don't know with this fifty four hundred dollars, according to what.
Well, I mean, we were budgeting fifty four hundred for a couple of years, there was a point, I remember when we were going through it last year, we determined that we had never paid the previous year.
Yeah.
That seemingly we had never been billed for it, I, so, when we started digging into it, we couldn't figure out how much it was, cuz we hadn't actually been billed for it.
Exactly.
In over a year, so we guessed that maybe it would stay the same, but obviously we were wrong.
And obviously, we paid nothing, or nothing's been posted this year yet, so I'm.
Yeah. Yeah.
You think we should go sixty five?
Well, two years ago, it was six thousand.
Yeah, I would, I would say uh probably sixty five.
That, why was it, it was sixty three, sixty, yeah, sixty five probably.
Yeah.
Six thousand five hundred. And will impact expense, that's the amount that we do, humane society charges this town, I haven't changed that either.
So that's three hundred dollars we contract with them?
That's what we back. Yeah, three hundred dollars, back TV broadcast fees, that's another thousand dollars.
Still a thousand, uh.
Uh, fire permits.
Uh, that's, so he rate charges fifty cents a permit, or he gets, the state gives him fifty cents for every permit that he issues, it's just. And you know, the funny thing, I didn't, I didn't see him this year, cuz Monley comes in and says, he has hundred permits, you have, but yeah, so.
He's doing paperwork.
Fifty dollars, sorry, fifty dollars.
Well, there was no burning for an awful long time.
Right.
That's true.
And then, and then for a long time, you couldn't burn anyway, cuz it was raining, you.
Okay, so now the next appropriations, yes, the appropriations, I don't think we're gonna be.
Sir, sticking with Cincy?
Do you wanna check off the ones we received information from?
No.
Do you have that?
I think we kinda have to do that all together.
Yeah, by the way, I.
We could do it during a meeting.
Yeah.
I received an appropriation request from the Morfrey Library today. Uh, asking, you know, what was the the parameters for that, she's a news person.
Yeah.
And I said to, I pointed out what it was, and it looked like the timeline had expired, but I said, if you got it to as soon as possible. I think under circumstances, we should, and I took exception of that.
Yeah.
So, just so you know.
Alright.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so the rest are, the rest here on this page are the um appropriations that we're going to not cover tonight, we can get a folder, probably do that during an Ash House. Where the select board meeting and.
Can I ask a question about that, I mean, do you know whether the treasurers have been gathering or?
We've been asking too, yeah, and Judy, that was sending me emails saying I put it in.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, cool, great, that's good.
One thing about Judy, she's very thoughtful, she's.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, which is good, because.
Yes, absolutely, we needed that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, um, next page, and um.
So that's it for tonight.
Appropriations, yeah, that's it for tonight, um.
Yeah, nothing new, okay.
So my, um, so, this is just about what I expect to keep my coverage tonight, so. I think. We have appropriations, we probably could be covered in a meeting, let's say the first meeting in December, I'll ha- I'll have all the paperwork together.
Yeah.
I'll ask them to have that for the December first meeting and we'll all schedule a few minutes during the regular select board meeting to go through the appropriations.
Okay.
Um. Uh, we need to spend a similar meeting like tonight, can you talk about highway?
Yeah.
So, um, I think it would be too much to put it all with a regular select board meeting. Can we um come in on Christmas Eve and do this?
What about Christmas Day campaign? Christmas Day, yes, that's what we should ask about.
Thanksgiving.
Well, that was my next.
I don't think we're, I would suggest Thanksgiving.
Not any food.
Yeah, with Mike, with Mike, he needed by the way.
They just invited us to Thanksgiving in this house, we can do it after.
Right. If you wanna join the wife and I for our meeting vegetarian Thanksgiving like we do every year.
There you go, there you go.
Bruce will be into it, I'm not sure, I don't know, the rest of you will miss it.
Yeah.
I've got a lot of years.
Yeah.
If he had corn, I'd, he'll stay with corn.
Let's take a look at it, pal.
The only thing we're saying about the highway funding is that, for the last couple of years, we've tried to level fund it, which has been pretty good.
Yeah.
But this year, it's gonna be as low as possible because of FEMA and the other things that we've come across.
Yeah. One year, two years ago.
Right.
And and I think, by the same token, we should probably, you guys should take a real hard look at that again.
I think never again.
Because there's some things that aren't making too much sense, um.
Yeah, um, yeah. So I think we're gonna have another one.
Are you talking in terms of expense too much?
Uh, well, yeah, I I I think that, you know.
It's not accurate.
It's not accurate, or we don't have a total gamble on it, because, you know, we should be putting thirty thousand dollars away each year for the paving. We should have thirty nine thousand dollars for expenses for outside vendors, because we're using them. Uh, one year, we might only use twenty thousand, the next year, we're doing forty thousand. Everything, if you have a catastrophic event, you have to bring in these people that have to work, so you gotta maintain that thing, and when highway funding, you can roll that over.
Right. Right.
So you, you know, if you don't use it, you don't lose it.
I I agree, we get level funded since I had been, since you joined the select board, so it's been eight years.
Yeah.
I I think that 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 eight years ago, that was that hundred and fifty five thousand dollars, that's not enough. Probably.
Well, I, sure.
So, uh, yeah, that, the calendar, we'll all there, today is the tenth, we have a meeting next week, the seventeenth. And we have Thanksgiving, we have the appropriations on the first.
Doc. As we, I know we're not good, I know we're not good.
What is, what is the drop date for the budget? Do, do we know, you know, when we actually have to have, when you guys have to actually have it done? Is it?
Well. We have to.
I think by January, we have to come up with a time.
Yeah, we absolutely have to vote it in January, because remember, the main thing is, in order to, in order to warn the articles.
Right, that's.
And warn town meeting to meet all of the other dates that have to happen.
Right, I've listened before.
Don't quote me on this, because I haven't looked at this year's calendar, but of course, the other thing is, I mean, I don't know if people have looked, our town meeting is gonna be February twenty eighth.
Oh.
Really?
Because March first is, Tu- Tuesday is March first. And our town meeting is the Monday before the first Tuesday.
That's.
Unless we change.
So.
Yeah.
Ooh.
We're, it's, it's early, so.
Last year is the sixth.
Already that's several days earlier.
That last one.
Yeah, it takes a week off.
And we have to have the town report. Distributed in some fashion to people. Ten days prior to that.
Prior to that.
We, the other thing, the main thing is though, is the warning of the. We have to warn town meeting and the articles for town meeting somewhere, but no, no more than thirty days before. But no less than. Twenty days before, or thirty days and forty days before, I can't remember the most, but I think it's thirty and forty. We have to warn it at least thirty days before. Town meeting, so we have to work back from February twenty eighth. And quickly, we get to the last weekend in January, probably, or the last week in January. You know, so, you know, if we're gonna do it, unless we're gonna have a special meeting. And I'm guessing on these dates, I could be wrong slightly, but this is what happens most years. Realistically, the nineteenth. Is probably the last point at which we can do it. But we also run into this problem, you can't do it too early. Because it can't be more than forty days before town meeting.
But we have to vote, and the.
But we, we have to finalize all of this stuff before we can form it all into the articles.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Before we can vote.
To warn the actual articles for town meeting.
Yeah, so I would like to have the budget, everything done in December.
Yes.
And then January, we just fine tune and get a.
Right, cuz we're gonna need time to figure out.
School must tell us how much they're gonna tax, tax the community and everything.
I mean, I don't wanna get us too super bogged down in this now, but we also have to decide. It's, we have to decide as we get closer to that, are we gonna have a physical town meeting?
I think we are, what we should.
Or are we gonna?
Yes, we have to, uh, we have to do it the same way we've always done it. Uh, because we revert back to the, uh, the non-emergency thing will be up.
That's sort of hard. I agree, well, let me, let me say this, they've expired for now, there's a hell of a lot of stuff that's going to eventually happen between now and then.
Yes.
Exactly.
So I wouldn't be too locked into our idea.
Wayne, although they reached now, most of it's been representative of of kids, and now they're getting thirty lined up.
Yeah, although a lot, a lot of older people are, who've been vaccinated, they're still vaccinated, so it's.
I get it too.
Oh, David, you're absolutely right, I didn't even think about that, so it could change.
So. Um.
Uh, we're not gonna lose any sales on that.
Well, I.
Yeah.
So, yeah, anyway, we have to, hopefully, we'll know.
Yeah.
We have.
So the drop date date is the end of December.
Right, so I'm saying, let's, let's, let's schedule for, um, do you think we could?
That's asking a lot.
I'm gonna do the.
I'll just say, we've never, in the five years I've been on the board, we've never gotten it all done by the end of December.
Yeah, right, there's always something open.
I'm.
We always think we will, but.
Uh.
Right.
Doc?
I'm just trying to get, trying to say that we need to have, no, it doesn't have to be on Wednesday though, but.
Yeah.
Um.
Now, there's a, compares the eighth and the fifteenth of December.
Yes.
We got the first, the eighth and the fifteenth.
Does the, does that work? Getting the other, that. Getting those other that.
Having, having the highway department review on the eighth.
Yeah.
And the fifteenth, we have the, uh, we have approved the lease and maybe make sure the appropriations.
We have a meeting here, 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 then there's a three, uh, where's that three weeks ban?
No three weeks.
There's none there.
No, there was, there will be some.
No three weeks.
Okay, that's, yeah, the first and fifteenth.
I think you're right that I, I mean, if, personally, I would be very much in favor of us planning on having another budget meeting.
Another hour and a half would just highway on the eighth.
I mean, hopefully by then. We can get more detail on things, I mean, I. Last year, we. Tried to get both Mark and Archie together to be at that meeting. They ended up meeting ahead of time themselves and basically ended up deciding we can just level fund everything, so.
Right.
But that doesn't, I have a feeling if we really wanna try to restructure some of the line items to make them more accurate. Like I think we want to do, we're going to need both of them.
Yeah. Yeah, on the eighth, so give them a heads up, heads up.
With respect to the appropriate.
To help us talk it through.
With respect to the appropriations that we received, everybody's information on this list?
I had not looked at.
We've received a lot, I don't know if everyone, but, uh, we've got quite a few.
Minutes.
Because I was gonna suggest we could do that next week if you have it all, but if you don't, you can't.
Yeah, um, um.
The deadline has passed for them.
So, I can ask, I'll ask Judy to pull it together and.
Yeah, we're gonna clutter your, we're gonna clutter December a little bit, if you put that on, on next week, if you have all the information. We could just run right down it and get, get it out of the way, because we have, we've, we have a lot to concentrate on.
If if the appropriations folder is together, I can say schedule some time during the meeting of the seventeenth.
Yeah.
If she feels that it's incomplete or there's, or or some whatever, I wanna do that on the first, but maybe you're right, we could probably spend some time on seventeen.
Now, is it, now you, you said something about the lease, lease on the fifteenth.
Well, honestly, we might be able to do, to to Bruce's point, you know, e- even if we just. Even if we're able to go through what we've received at that point, what's been gathered, it's, and then we finish it on the first.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
And then we get all that done, and then on the eighth, all we've got left, well, I mean, I've, I've a lot of open questions on other things. But we have highway and open things on other stuff.
Um.
Because those are, I mean, we don't usually, other than the volume of them, we don't usually have to debate a lot about the appropriations. So it's just honestly making sure that the main people haven't forgotten to get them to us.
Yeah, and when does that come off? That was in October thirty?
Yeah, the October twenty ninth, I think, this year.
Yeah.
Wanna start the meeting on December eighth at six or six thirty?
This is for the, this is for the highway part.
Six thirty, six thirty is fine, but if they're undecided.
Well, that's kind of a little up to Archie and Mark too. Whether they, well, not Mark, some are for Archie.
They don't have to talk before they get here, probably.
Yeah. Either is fine.
Okay, I have a little time to 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 double check, but I'm, I'll say six thirty then.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's better for them to be one or the other, I feel, if that's true.
Okay.
So, with with respect to the lease, you mentioned the fifteenth, are you saying we're gonna discuss the lease or we're gonna have a.
No, the lease we need to have, by the fifteenth, we need to vote, vote on the lease and then present it to them because.
Can I make a?
Okay.
Uh, can I make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, well, just on the agendas. Coming up, but, yeah, right.
I don't, I don't think that's on the agenda for tonight, though.
Seconded.
You're right, you're right, all right, the charge seconded by Stan, oh, wait, 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 David.
You got a real.
Motion to Stan, well, any discussion, all those in favor of adjourned seating, special budget meeting, please signify by saying hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you very much. Time is eight thirty eight.
Stop the recording?
Yes.
Oh.
I can't use the mouse.
Recording stopped.
Okay.
Okay, and put the fact TV in the, oh, everyone's here anyway, so we can just shut it down.
Yeah, that's true.